Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester City Council meeting. And please stand by, stand for the invocation by the Reverend Michael King, Semper Second Baptist Church of Worcester, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Star Spangled Banner.
On behalf of our Lord God and Savior Jesus Christ, I want to thank Father God for all that's gathered here this afternoon, this evening. Thank you for our mayor and our city councilman and the leaders of the community of Worcester. Father God, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, let us open our minds and our hearts and our ears to be closed to all nonsense and open to your word and your word only, which is wisdom, that we can have the knowledge and understanding what will be said here tonight. And let us hear clearly what is being spoken. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for your breath that you gave us this morning and continue to watch over our families all day long. So Father God, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we thank you. Amen.
Appreciate it. Okay, can we do a roll call?
Counselor Bergman.
Here.
Counselor Calorio.
Here.
Counselor G.A.
Here.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Maro Collison.
Here.
Counselor New Yen.
Here.
Counselor Ojeda.
Here.
Counselor Basillo.
Here.
Counselor Russell.
Here.
Counselor Toomey.
Here.
The Mayor Petty.
Here. Okay, approve of the minutes. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Public petition, public participation. A person may speak for no more than two minutes on any items appearing on the agenda. And so I ask you to keep to two minutes. We have a lot of work to do tonight. And also, we'll give an hour for public testimony. The rules to give a half hour, but I think there's some issues that people want to speak, so we'll give an hour if that's okay with everybody. So at five, six, 10, we will start public participation. Okay. Are you supposed to be moving now, though? No, it was over there for a reason. No, we, oh, wait, oh, hang on, wait a minute, wait a minute. What happened to the other one we just had here?
We got one right here.
Oh, okay, that's going to be, okay, put that, okay, leave it there for now.
We didn't get the memo, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want to give?
Yeah, I can leave it there for now. So going forward, that was, the one on my left will be used for public participation and one on the right will be used for the administration. So make it easier, but, okay, okay.
Thank you.
So these are your names, your residence and item number?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Fred Nathan. Hello?
It's on, I think. Go ahead.
Doesn't sound off.
No, it's not on.
Okay, there we go.
Can we put that mic on? Go ahead, try again, Fred.
All right, thank you. Fred Nathan, Worcester. Before I start, I almost thought there was an anti-Fred move that you put in there to keep me from being the first, but anyhow. So eight C, yes. Eight E, yes. I'm going to kind of jump around there. I'm going to come back to something here and just find it clear. On ten D, here we go again, the rental unit. At some point, the city has to make up their mind if they're going to do something, stick by it and stick to it and let the chips fall where they may, but beware November, in the odd year, we'll, we'll pay dividends to some people. I just want to make a comment here on, on a friend of mine's item, and I'm unclear about it. In Charles Luster's request for a black community center, I don't know, HA, I don't know if I'm confused, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, but the MLK Center, the, where, oh, I'm sorry.
No, we could, comments up here, please.
Isn't that considered, I don't know if I'm wrong, is that considered a black center? I don't know if I'm, if I'm confused, if I am, I'm sorry. So we keep on talking about rentals and everything, about the high price of rents in here, and I just want to go back to an item, a tabled item, that was put forth by Connie Luke's, 11A, about any kind of rent control. I mean, if you're a landlord, you should be allowed to charge what is considered a reasonable rent. However, we are getting way out of control here.
Can you wrap up your comments?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. If someone at the Cove is charging $4,300 a month for a two-bedroom, two-bathroom, 1,000 square feet, I don't know whether that's, is that overpriced or is that greed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
But just, I'm just curious, I'm going to ask this one last thing as I'm walking away from here. At some point, if places like that are getting a TIF, and if they are, it should be looked into.
Okay, thank you.
But that's all.
Next speaker, please. Anybody? There you go. Get your names, your residence and item number?
Sure. My name is Ben Parker, reside at 24 Ryberg Terrace, Worcester, Mass. My wife Betty. This is a reference to 12A. Several months ago, I was guided by George Russell to fill out a petition that would help us take care of a private road. For years, the road's been pretty well under, you know, maintained, only done by its own residents. And the petition allowed me to ask the city to allow $6 per linear foot to patch the road. So I went through the process, got every single house owner to sign the petition, and delivered that to the city hall. It went through legal, it went through the DPW, and ended up on Mr. Batista's desk. And for no reason that I know of, it was turned down. So my goal tonight is to ask Mr. Batista why the funding wasn't approved for this private street. I believe we're the only street in all of Worcester that asks for this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, say your names, your residence.
Ron Rajat, resident of the city of Worcester, 61 years. Talk about Section 10E, 10F for the rental property tax inspection. I'm horrified at reading the 23 pages that you want to do, you know, it's a $45 rental registration fee for five years. You stated that there's approximately 50,000 rental units, which equals $2,250,000. You want me to act as an agent of the city of Worcester to get consent, provide tenants to get a consent, search the apartment, a $50 inspection fee per apartment, which comes out to $2,500,000? Does it include the code violations that could be there? I'm also surprised that you're going to fine someone $100 if they refuse the inspection. Okay? Today it's the rental property, tomorrow it's going to be dwelling houses, as I refer to 105 CMR 400.100.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Benji Kemper. I'm talking about 10D and 10F. People deserve to have a home that is safe. This includes if building, if the building is three units or less and is owner-occupied. Worcester housing stock is old. Forty-two percent of Worcester's occupied housing was built before 1939. That is 85 years ago. Years of deferred maintenance have contributed to high rates of substandard housing in Worcester. Improving building code enforcement is a goal of the Worcester Now Next Citywide Plan and the FY 2529 Municipal Strategic Plan. Not only do inspections improve the quality of life of tenants, but it will help save lives. Since 2010, the Worcester Fire Department has lost three firefighters in triple-decker fires. Firefighter Johnny Davies, senior in 2011, firefighter Christopher Roy in 2018, and firefighter Jason Menard in 2019. In May 2022, four residents died in a fire on Gage Street. Our community deserves healthy, safe housing.
Thank you. Just your names, your residence.
Hocke Meridian, Worcester resident and landlord in the city of Worcester. I'm here to talk about 10C, 10N, 10F. Regarding the landlord registry, this is a complex, for, complex ordinance that you've created. I don't think anybody realized when this was initially started back in 2022 that it was going to be a 25-page ordinance. It's way too complicated, and people deserve a chance to review it, and this needs to be vetted. I'm asking you to slow this down. A lot of simple questions were asked, some by Counselor King, some by other counselors, and other comments were made by city officials. One that stands out in my mind, when the Code Commissioner was at the hearing, talking about the implementation, at the, the Economic Development Hearing, talking about this ordinance, he said, "Oh, I don't know how we're going to do it. We don't even have the software ready to do this." But yet, you're already collecting fees for it, and I was talking to another counselor, he said, "This isn't going to happen for at least a year. Why are you worried about it? People ask me, 'Why are you upset about this?'" I'm really not upset. I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed that our counselors didn't know what you were getting the general Worcester population into, because this item deserves more time. It's been on the record since 2022, and yet, the last three, four, or four months, you've been pushing it. It came out disguised as a landlord summit, which, to me, it was another seminar about how to be a good landlord, which, I know how to be a good landlord. You fix things when they come up, and you take care of the tenant's complaints, and you collect your rent, and you pay your taxes. That's how you be a good landlord. It's very simple. I want to say also that Counselor King had asked a couple of other questions of the Code Commissioner. He asked him, "How many of these Chapter 110 ordinance, 110 inspections have you done?" Couldn't get a straight answer. So I don't know who brought this to the table initially, but this is not going to make the city of Worcester any safer. If you completed the 110 ordinance inspections, that would make the city of Worcester a lot safer. You're just adding more bureaucracy and more fees to the taxpayers in the city of Worcester. And as far as I'm concerned, this is really all about taxes and nothing more. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Just your names, your residence and item number?
My name is Parley Jones, and I reside at 34 Burncoach Street. My daughter, Chaija, and I have been running the Village Worcester in the main south area of Worcester for three and a half years. It's an Afrocentric cultural learning and healing center. Afrocentric is another word for black. That being said, I'm here in support of Resolution 8J, a request for city council to adopt a resolution to support a black community center to help build the black community in the city of Worcester, along with the Village Worcester. Just felt like we should acknowledge what already exists. Each center, I'm quite sure, would attract different families and folks depending on what they're offering. There should be a black community center in each sector of our city, helping to create spaces that are safe, educational, fun, and welcoming for black folks and others in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
David Webb, city of Worcester. You guys had two years to plan Mill Street and the rental registry, but we ran until midnight last night and started an hour and a half early today. Does the city feel well managed? Does it seem like people know what their job title is and how to do it? It was pointed out to me last week that if Worcester made data-based decisions, if Worcester did evaluations, and then made determinations based on the findings of those evaluations, we would be getting both a new chief of police and a new city manager in the next half-year. If instead, we keep doing things the way they've always been done, we're going to keep getting what we've always gotten. We have two years of data now. We can learn from our mistakes. Streaks weren't plowed consistently this winter. They're riddled with potholes now. The DEI entire, all of the positions remain vacant, which means there are still seven spots open on both the LGBTQ and African Affairs Advisory Commissions. We did not do anything about crisis pregnancy centers when the council voted to prohibit disruptive medical practices. Our checkbooks are closed citing cybersecurity concerns that could be fixed with basic technical education. Our traffic violence, don't blame the roads, blame the people, has increased, and while his new Department of Transportation might be the only department that operates based on data and best practices, it still ran into significant issues due to purchasing practices of the city. Cost of living is at an all-time high. Residents are still pleading for trash bins. Look around you. Does this city feel well managed? I understand that data can be scary and confusing, but there's a better way to do this than going with the person picked by the last guy. We can get away from perpetuating our institutional problems and do an actual search this time. Let me yield my 15 seconds.
Thank you. Just your names, your residence and item number?
Hello, my name is Kelsey Crisasmo, and I live in Worcester, Massachusetts. As an Asian American, I just wanted to say that I also second the Black Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Just your names, your residence, item number?
My name is Dean Fisher. I'm a resident of Worcester, longtime, born and raised here. Family, many generations have been a part of the community. I'm a veteran. I served eight years in the Marines and eight years in the Army. I'm also looking for support for the black community building as well. In behalf of veterans, because I think that is a, a population that is not receiving its just fair or information or way to simulate information, not only that, I'm a father, I'm a grandfather. I have eight children, eight grandchildren, all gone to schools of the city of Worcester, and they're in the school, and there are some major issues. And we need that hub in order to formulate, to come up with ideas and to be able to strengthen our community. And we need that, that space. And I hope, in behalf of veterans and the community itself, that we can get a footing so way we can be a part of the community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'll close this part of the meeting? Anybody? Won't you come up to the railing if you're going to speak and the next person and... Just your names, your residence and item number?
Hi, my name is Anisia Jimenez. I'm a Worcester resident, and I'm the community organizer for Worcester Common Ground. I'm here to speak in favor of item 9E, which is for resident parking on Piedmont Street because it is supportive of our residents. The auto body shop that's there takes up many of the parking spots on the street and that the cars, with their cars that need to be repaired. This makes it difficult for residents who live on the street to park their cars as they do not have driveways. The cars are typically registered and have license plates, so there's typically nothing the police can do, and this is why resident parking is important to solve the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, just your names, your residence, item number?
Hello, my name is Larry Batoon. I reside in Oxford, Massachusetts. I'm also in favor of the Black Community Center. Also, I'm in support of the Village in Worcester. I'm a Worcester resident, and I believe that the Black Cultural or Community Center will benefit the entire population of Worcester because it gives insight on our culture and also how to deal with us as an ethnic group.
Thank you. Go ahead, get your names, your residence, item number?
Hi, Serenity Jones, city of Worcester, Esther Street. I am in support of Charles Luster's Black Community Center. He has been a coach, a leader in this city. He's done great things with Together We Eat. So I definitely think that that would be a great improvement to the city. The youth really need a place to go that's safe. But I also want to touch on item seven. As a city resident, I came here to voice my concerns about the city, city manager's evaluation. I can remember meeting Eric and hearing that he's from Grafton Hill and thinking that that's a great thing because he's going to really understand our city's struggle. But sadly, I feel like he's out of touch, and it showed with the Spectrum contract. It showed when the article came out for the pay increases for the departments. Some of those pay increases were $30,000. These are all people making over $100,000. Also, we don't have a contract for our fire department, our police department. Our teachers just had to fight for a contract updated with a livable wage, and sadly, some of those teachers are going to lose their jobs. And also, your friends at Wind Developer just got caught price gouging apartments. The only thing going up in this city is our taxes. Crime is going up, and we have zero plans for the homeless. So to me, that doesn't sound like we are a booming city. That's all. Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing nobody else. Anybody on, I'm sorry, just your names, your residence, item number?
I'm Kim Kalachik, Ames Street. And I'm here because I keep getting this information, I'm getting inundated about this inspectional services program that you guys are starting, and I am completely against this. I do not think that anyone has the right to enter my home, any part of my home, without a warrant. There needs to be probable cause. And so I am highly against this action of just rolling into our homes and disrupting my apartment, my tenant's apartment, my basement, and going through my things. So I just wanted to come and voice that I do not agree with this, and I really think you need to rethink also fining us if we don't sign up for the inspection or program that you guys are developing. Thank you.
Thank you. Just your names, your address, your residence, I'm sorry, and item number?
I don't have a number because I just found out the meeting was now, and I didn't want to miss saying something. So I apologize, and I will be short. So we had an eviction...
Just to the record, your names, your residence.
Oh, sorry. Grace Ross, 10 Oxford Street, Worcester. I need to catch my breath, I guess. So on Thursday, we had another eviction scheduled at a household with an adult daughter who has never been named in the court case, and there she is with people to evict her. And they, we now found out they've known she's been in that house for two and a half years. So has the court known for two and a half years and chose actively to not add her to the case. So the court actively decided that she is not covered by this eviction case, but they're still there to evict. The, I worked with the city manager's offices because this is supposedly a Worcester constable. I am going to get you some very alarming footage once I get it from somebody who has it, but you all voted, among other things, that the police should ensure that the basics around an eviction are covered, like the people are named who are going to be evicted have been part of a court case, and if there's a bankruptcy, that the eviction can't go forward. Well, we hit a new bump about eight years ago or more. The Worcester Police and WAF, the Worcester Andy Foreclosure Team, arranged before evictions where we knew there was going to be a protest for one of us to go down and speak to the police in the morning before anything jumps off, before tensions are high, before the eviction goes forward. That kind of got codified by the Police Reform Act in 2020, when they said that if there's a protest, police know about it, they should talk to the protesters before the protest.
Can you wrap up your comments?
What happened on Thursday was that the police who came literally told the folks who were there to protest that they would only talk to their lawyer. Sorry, we don't carry a lawyer around with us everywhere we go. And since when would the police not talk to you if you don't have a lawyer? So we are wandering farther and farther from the collegial way that we've always tried to lower the violence in this city and to protect people...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
...to be only legally evicted.
Thank you.
Please, we need your help again.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker? Anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have three calling users. I'm going to start with Kara first. Can you please say your name and city of residence once I unmute you?
Yep, Kara Burke Powers. I am a resident of Worcester and a landlord. I have actually lived in over a dozen apartments in Worcester, most recently the one I share with my husband and daughter. Upstairs, we have two units we rent to other families, and we've already applied for the rental registry. It was super easy. It took like five minutes. The idea that this $25 a unit and then $5 after that is an onerous obligation for people who are responsible for other people's homes is ludicrous. The policy is not too complicated, it's not too expensive, and the $2 million it might generate, as another speaker said, as you all know, is not a lot of money in the context of a city budget. It was vetted. It was not fast-tracked. You all passed it unanimously. I also want to address the fear mongering we heard from other landlords and that we've heard from counselors on the floor who pondered whether inspectors entering homes is even constitutional, and that no one should be allowed at our homes because they'll go through our things. I have out of all three units in my home inspected. The city communicated with us ahead of time. We were able, because we have good relationships with both of our units, to ensure they were comfortable and able to let people in. No one looked in any cabinets or drawers, nor would there be any reason for them to. They did lead test all the paint and ensured that our alarms were in good working order. This not only ensures that our tenants are safe, but also that my own daughter is safe. And we're currently in the process of de-leading, something we would have never known to do without the inspection because we had de-led certificates, but we didn't know that over time that can change because things can actually come, paint can peel away, things, the policies change, and one of our wired alarms also wasn't working. And so it's not about punishing landlords, it's about making sure that everyone is safe. It's about taking the responsibility of, of actually creating our housing stock seriously. And the reason we need a registry to the point of like, well, we should get caught up with inspections first. How do we know where to start or what to prioritize if we don't have a working database of all of the rental units in the city? We don't even know how many of the people who are voting on this, who have a conflict of interest, are landlords because we don't have a registry.
Can we wrap up the comments, please?
I was on the Human Rights Commission for eight years. We tried to make policy recommendations, which is part of the responsibility, around rental units, and it was almost impossible because we didn't even know what we were dealing with.
Okay, thank you.
And so I would urge you to keep this intact as much as possible for everyone's safety and to really question any landlords that think that this is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Joyce Mandell. I'm going to try to unmute the resident now.
Just your name, your residence?
Hi. Wow, okay. So Joyce Mandell, 10 Children Hill Drive. I own the house there. I'm speaking on items 10F, and I, like the person before me, is against exempting anyone, even owner-occupant, from, from the registry and routine inspections. Two years ago, I had to have my whole second floor fully rewired. Why? I didn't really know it at the time, but my family and I were living in a death trap in our single-family home. Our electrician said we were just lucky there was never a fire, their, the wires were so stripped, and guess what? I didn't know the extent of the danger. Everyone in this city deserves to live in a safe and healthy apartment, whether or not the apartment is owner-occupied. All apartments... It was vetted. It was not fast-tracked. You all passed it unanimously. I also want to address the fear mongering we heard from other landlords and that we've heard from councilors on the floor, who pondered whether inspectors entering homes is even constitutional. And that no one should be allowed at our homes, because they'll go through our things. I have out of all three units in my home inspected. The city communicated with us ahead of time. We were able, because we have good relationships with both of our units, to ensure they were comfortable and able to let people in. No one looked in any cabinets or drawers, nor would there be any reason for them to. They did lead test all the paint and ensure that our alarms were in good working order. This not only ensures that our tenants are safe, but also that my own daughter is safe. And we're currently in the process of de-letting, something we would have never known to do without the inspection, because we had de-lead certificates. But we didn't know that, over time, that can change, because things can actually come, paint can peel away, the policies change. And one of our wired alarms also wasn't working. And so it's not about punishing landlords. It's about making sure that everyone is safe. It's about taking the responsibility of actually creating our housing stock seriously. And the reason we need a registry, to the point of like, well, we should get caught up with inspections first. How do we know where to start or what to prioritize if we don't have a working database of all of the rental units in the city? We don't even know how many of the people who are voting on this, who have a conflict of interest, are landlords, because we don't have a registry.
Can we wrap up the comments, please?
I was on the Human Rights Commission for eight years. We tried to make policy recommendations, which is part of the responsibility, around rental units. And it was almost impossible, because we didn't even know what we were dealing with.
Okay, thank you.
And so I would urge you to keep this intact as much as possible for everyone's safety and to really question any landlords that think that this is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Joyce Mandell. I'm going to try to unmute the resident now.
Is your neighbor, city residents?
Hi. Wow, okay. So Joyce Mandell, 10 Children Hill Drive. I own the house there. I'm speaking on items 10F. And I, like the person before me, is against exempting anyone, even owner occupants, from the registry and routine inspections. Two years ago, I had to have my whole second floor fully rewired. Why? I didn't really know it at the time, but my family and I were living in a death trap in our single-family home. Our electrician said we were just lucky there was never a fire. The wires were so stripped. And guess what? I didn't know the extent of the danger. Everyone in this city deserves to live in a safe and healthy apartment, whether or not the apartment is owner occupied. All apartments need to be registered and safely accounted for, because fires and other dangers too can happen and have happened to our older stock of housing, even if the owner lives there. This registry, like the speaker said before me, can support landlords in addressing any sort of safety issues. It is the right thing to do. We've already passed it. Don't water this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Jeff. I'm trying to mute the resident now.
Jeff St. Lawrence, Worcester. I do want to point out, this was fast-tracked. I think the people that voted on it didn't even realize they were voting on it at the time. They were playing on strings about a fire, and then just pushed it through. There was no public commentary, there was no public discussion. The thing was just pushed through, and it really shouldn't have happened like that. Everyone, there should have been public meetings, multiple town meetings, and it should have been developed with residents. And that's why this has been dragging out for two years. And that's why multiple weeks and months now have gone by, with people all over the place, no one understanding what's going on, awful rollout process. We're days away from the ordinance to have to being to register your properties, and we haven't even voted on the final ordinance. It's still being drafted. The whole thing's ridiculous. I'm supportive of 10F changes. I don't think it goes far enough. It helps to focus it. It really should be about fire safety. We shouldn't be worrying about silly things. Everyone agrees it's to be about fire safety. Why are we not focused on fire safety? There was a comment, in order to fast-track this, if we really care about people's lives by HDI, we would be focused on fire safety, and we wouldn't be filing people's petitions that say we should focus on fire safety. Gate Street had tons of violations known by inspectional services, and that did not stop the fire. That did not stop the fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, the last speaker is Sarah Bertrand. I'm going to try to mute the resident now.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah. I live in Worcester, and I'm a renter. And I'd also like to speak about the rental registry and just, again, pointing out that we are in a housing crisis in terms of housing quality, housing affordability, housing access, quantity of housing. And I believe that requires bold action, without cutting corners, without exemptions for the registry, and that, again, centers those most vulnerable and impacted by the issue, who are tenants. I think code violations, as we all know, in our city are not unusual. And it's so important that, for all of us, that people's health is centered. I'd also just like to emphasize the role that access to housing and housing quality have on our health. Both those are social determinants of health. Code violations, including the fire safety piece, negatively impact people's health. And as we have seen, are questions of life and death in the cases of fatal fires. So again, I'd like to just ask that we move the rental registry forward as soon as possible and do not include exemptions for owner occupied units. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more speaker. I think it's Natalie. Can you please say your full name and city of residence?
Hi, yes, Natalie Gibson, Worcester, Mass. My apologies, I did not realize I was going to get my eyes dilated today, so I can hardly see. I'm speaking about the rental registry, and I think that we need to go ahead and implement that. I do not think that there need to be exemptions, because the owner is living in the apartment building. They can maintain their own apartment well. That does not mean that they will maintain the tenant's apartment well. As others have said, and I agree, there has been a lot of fires. There's been tragedy, not just from residents, but also our very brave firefighters. I had the unfortunate circumstance of watching the Washington Heights fire from my house. At the height of it, I could see the flames. And all I kept thinking through my mind is, and listening to what was going on on the scanner, was I hope that nobody dies in this. And I'm not blaming Washington Heights or anybody else for this fire, but we need to know the conditions of all of these buildings, including our own homes. I just realized last night that anyone who owns a pet in Worcester has to have them legally get a permit for them. So where's the people up in arms about having to have a permit to have a dog? This is the right thing to do. And I believe that is it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to close public comment right now. We're going to go into petitions. And just make sure if people have petitions, they can go petitions first. Counselor, Carol Council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was hoping that we could move up the rental registry to the-
Okay, we'll do right after petitions then.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, petitions. 8A, refer the planning board. Those in favor, post so ordered. 8B, refer the public works. For those in favor, post so ordered. 8C to 8F, refer the traffic and parking. Those in favor, post so ordered. 8G, we're going to set a hearing July 16, 2024, at 6:00 PM, for a contact location on Plantation Street. 8H, this is private way, temporary repairs on Alden Street. We'll send that to the city. Is anybody here for that, first, before I? Okay, we'll send that to the manager. Those in favor, also ordered. Natalie Gibson requests, council request, city court consider following changes to the online petition submission process, create an easier viewable way to find petitions already submitted and their status at a space for date and time in petition form, being filed and ensure transparency of when the petition is submitted. And send a copy of the submitted petition with the confirmation email. We'll send that to the court. Those in favor, post so ordered. Let's see, what else we got? Charles Luster requests the city council adopt the attached resolutions for a Black Community Center to help build the Black community in the city of Worcester. Is your name, city residents? Mr. Luster?
Charles Luster, City of Worcester resident, representing the Uncommonwealth Group. Want to talk about the Black Community Center. You know, we looked at different things like 290, Plumlee Village, Henry Lee Willis, Mosaic Group. These are all things that affected the Black community in a negative way by getting rid of it or altering the terrain. One of the things we looked at recently was Polar Park, how minorities was left out. We saw the contractor got fined $1.8 million, and the city got $500,000 back from the fine. We'd like to make a proposal that that $500,000, instead of using it for minority grants for $2,500, that's like nickeling and diming our community. We would ask that the city help the Uncommonwealth and our community support a Black Community Center. We've already sat down with different people in the community that support the Community Center. And we're looking at different things like drug addiction. Like the gentleman spoke before, talked about a veteran home. Once the Elks was dismantled, we no longer had a home for the Black Veterans Group. You know, we look at the city of Worcester, and we look at the gun violence in our community. And I look at, on the weekends, is when we have the most gun violence. And by having a community center, we'd be able to be open on the weekends, doing things that other nonprofits and companies aren't doing just as of yet, like staying open on Saturdays, where we know we can alter our young men's actions in the streets by giving them a place to go. By having a 24-hour food pantry in our community. We have the refrigerators, we got rid of that. But imagine if we put the refrigerators in a building, where we constantly have security watching the food. So what we're looking for the city to do is to help us with this proposal, to help us with this building, so that we can build our community. And like Sister Parley said, you know, it's great to have more than one community center. You know, we look at the great work that Central Los America is doing. Latino population is doing great. We look at ACE, COSCA, and what he's doing with the African community. That's great. So what we're asking is, don't leave the Black community out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luster. So the motions to adopt this and sentence the manager for... I know I've been, met with Charles for a few times over this issue, and I think it's a good start that we start somewhere. And maybe we start sentencing the manager and have him come back with a report. Counselor King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this particular matter. I want to state unequivocally, Mr. Chairman, that I wholeheartedly and enthusiastically support this resolution. Mr. Chairman, the importance of supporting initiatives to uplift our community cannot be overstated. It's something that's necessary. Supporting activities that benefit our community is necessary, Mr. Chairman. We know that, for many years, we've talked about these sorts of things. We have The Village over on King Street that's done a lot of work here in our community. It's been an honor to work with them on this particular issue. It's also equally important, Mr. Chairman, to identify those details. And I look forward to the report from the city manager as it relates to that, Mr. Chairman. So again, supporting this is a very easy thing to do. I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, what I will not support. I will not support any leadership in the Black community or outside of the Black community that targets leadership, that targets the elderly. I won't support, in neither shape nor body, any sort of leadership within the Black community or outside the Black community that targets Black elected officials. I will not support any leadership in the Black community or outside of the Black community that threatens my person, Mr. Chairman, or threatens my children indirectly or directly. I will not support, Mr. Chairman, any leadership inside or outside the Black community that threatens folks who are cultural brokers, folks who engage in communication. I will not support any leadership, Mr. Chairman, that harasses, bullies, intimidates, under no circumstances. And that includes this body, Mr. Chairman. Now, I will also say, any sort of leadership that shows up at youth events and attempts to inject politics onto the playing field should not be supported. As Vice Chairman of this city council, I will not support, under any circumstance, that sort of leadership. We need leadership that propels and pushes folks together forward. Our due diligence, Mr. Chairman, is what's necessary. We should not reward any sorts of antics or tactics. I will never support, Mr. Chairman, any leadership within the Black community or outside of the Black community that targets my Blackness, my belonging in this community, Mr. Chairman. Colorism. Never will I support that sort of leadership. I want to make this, again, very, very clear. I will not support leadership that has targeted every Black elected official on both elected bodies, school committee and city council, over the last few terms, Mr. Chairman. Nor should this body, I want to be very clear about that. It's all about the details, Mr. Chairman. I will not support leadership in the Black community or outside of the Black community that corners elected officials when family matters and potential hirings in this city don't go their way. I will not support that sort of leadership, Mr. Chairman. This is not what Worcester is. It's about details. And I expect that the city manager does his due diligence in regards to all of this. For you see, Mr. Chairman, I don't know exactly what supporting all of this actually means outside of what I just heard asserted regarding a half a million dollars, Mr. Chairman. What I do know is that there's all sorts of additional factors that come to play. I've been a social worker in the city for close to three decades. I've run programs for youths for close to three decades. And I'm well-versed in many of this, Mr. Chairman. I will close by saying this. When we talk about the African community, we're talking about the Black community. We're talking about other minority groups. There's a thing called the African diaspora. And there's an old saying, my wife happens to be Puerto Rican in the ocean. My family's from the island of Bermuda. We're not Bayesian, we're Bermudian. And there's an old saying, folks, and what they say is, same slave ship, different island. And I'll be clear, very clear, that leadership matters. And this particular matter, Mr. Chairman, I call upon you as mayor of the city. I call upon the city manager, and I call on this body to do its due diligence. And I implore you all to refuse to support any sort of leadership that pulls people down and that has a track record of threatening folks. And these leaders in the Black community or outside of the Black community, wherever they may be, we need to make sure we're doing right by all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wholeheartedly support this resolution.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt. Counselor Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Counselor King, for sharing that and having us reflect on, you know, what it means to actually support the Black community and the nuances within the Black community, as it is not a monolith. And so I do want to motion to file this. I support the resolution in its wording. I do support a Black Community Center. I think in not knowing and tying half a million dollars to it, I think is just a little bit preemptive. And I also think that, I just want to acknowledge, The Village is here. That's not to pit, you know, one Black Community Center with another Afro-centric healing center. It is that I think there is work that is being done in Worcester that is very beautiful and that also needs support. And so when we talk about tying half a million to this resolution, I think it's unfair. I think it's unfair to make that preemptive judgment before having a community grant committee or anything that actually makes sense in creating a process that would be transparent and community-driven. And so I don't think I have the right to say yes to this without hearing everyone else, and especially, once again, the non-monolithic Black community. And so that's my motion. I also do believe that we need to, you know, not just be lip-serviced when we talk about supporting the Black community. And so I do want to motion for a report on how we support and have fun, and the funding efforts for the Black community in the last few years, as well as the commitment we have towards the Black community in the next few years as well. And so that will be my motion and to file this as, once again, I think it's important that we support all efforts of the Black community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, if I may. My understanding is, is this order is as written. It does not include-
I was just going to say that. You're absolutely correct. Yep. I was just going to mention that. The half million dollars is not included in the resolution. It was suggested by the maker of the petition. It was suggested by the make-up of the, by the petition. Okay. Okay. And that's why it's going to the manager, get the report back, and move on from there. So the motion is to file. It takes presence of the motion itself. So yes, the motion is to be filed.
Chairman, can I just speak for a second time? Do I have any minutes left on my-
You have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Some odd seconds.
You know, I, I just want to appreciate the fact that we have to, again, make the best decisions. And my question to the Chair to the Administration as relates to this matter of a half a million dollars that just came to our attention today, to the Chair to the Administration, regarding the settlement monies that we received, can you share what the parameters are of disbursement of those dollars?
Mr. Manager?
Through the Chair to the Council, those dollars are restricted to MBE, Minority Women-Owned Businesses and Entities with specific activities. But I could have Peter Dunn share a little bit more about those details as well. But there's restrictions to those dollars.
Mr. Dunn?
Sure. Through the Chair to the Counselor, we haven't spent any of those dollars yet. When that settlement came through, from the Attorney General's office, they asked us to specifically use those dollars to advance opportunities for underrepresented businesses, specifically those that are certified. So certified minority-owned business enterprises and certified woman-owned business enterprises in terms of their growth and opportunities, particularly, I think it would be good to tie that into government contracting opportunities, but it doesn't have to be limited to that. It could be just, you know, their opportunities to grow those businesses and, and support them. So that's kind of the intent of what the Attorney General has us using those funds for. But we haven't spent any of those dollars yet.
Thank you. Is it, there's no timeframe through the Chair regarding the expenditure of those funds? And through the Chair to the Administration, the hypothetical that was posed here, does that fit within those parameters through the Chair?
Mr. Dunn?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, it's tough to kind of just react based on some initial sort of commentary about what that might look like. I think we would definitely want to set up a level of process to figure out what the best use is for that and create a process that is, you know, open for people to apply to as well, as we do with most of our grant funding. There was reference to, we have a program right now that's primarily being funded out of ARPA dollars for really growing the pool of eligible diverse business owners to get their certification through the various certification agencies that exist out there. And so we have those dollars through the American Rescue Plan Act. We don't envision being oversubscribed where we would have to dip into the Attorney General funds, but it would be aligned with what we're doing in that regard. And that program specifically, or that initiative to grow the pool of certified businesses, was something that was recommended out of the study that we did. So just as a reminder, we've sent a number of communications to the Council about this. In 2022, after, you know, the settlement, we had conducted a study with the UMass Donahue Institute about the barriers, challenges, and where we were at as a community in terms of government contracting opportunities with underrepresented business owners. And that resulted in revising our goals. So we have new goals for the purchases of goods and services as a city. And one of the recommendations was to also grow the pool of certified businesses so that we could have more opportunities to engage in those kinds of contracts. At the time, when that study was conducted, for the entire city of Worcester, there were 49 businesses that were either registered as woman-owned or minority-owned. We estimate that we have about 7,000 or 8,000 businesses in the city of Worcester, so that is a huge discrepancy based on what we believe the pool of eligible business owners are out there that just either haven't, you know, saw that opportunity to get certified or don't understand government contracting. And certainly, some industries don't sell certain goods and services that government typically purchases, but there are other values to getting cer-, value to getting certified that we've been doing a number of technical assistance sessions with community-based organizations and getting that word out so that folks, so that we kind of demystify that process and help folks figure out how to navigate that. I will say the certification process with the state is not an easy thing to do. It takes some time. It requires paperwork and all of that. So we've been working both within our office and with a number of community-based organizations to try to help eligible businesses understand that and really kind of hold their hand through the process so that we can see better outcomes in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do want to say I've met with the economic development folks a couple of times. I have an item that will be coming forward regarding to these disparities in short order. And I just want to close by saying, once again, I'd like to reiterate the importance of leadership. I stand before you as the longest-serving at-large counselor, who's a black person in the history of the city. I'm in year, I'm in year nine and 10, Mr. Chairman. And again, it's important that when we talk about things that are sacred, that have been gained through litigation, because of what was done wrong to our community, it's a sacred trust that we engage with when we give those monies out. And when we have leadership, whether it's within the black community or not within the black community, that threatens our retired public safety officers, we need to do our due diligence, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor No. 1?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeing that there isn't money quite tied to this resolution, and as I mentioned, I do support the language of this, which is to support a black community center. And so I'll retract my motion to file, but I do want to be clear that I do not support it being tied with finances and that I hope we continue to do a community process when it comes to the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is to adopt, send it to the manager. Roll call.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Calorio?
Yes.
Counselor G.A.
Yes.
Counselor Merrill Carlson?
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Ojeda?
Yes.
Counselor Basillo?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Toomey?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Counselor Merrill Carlson has asked to go to the rental registry items. We have 10D, request the manager ensure a process that allows third-party companies the ability to complete inspection of rental properties in the city as part of the amended rental dwelling unit periodic inspection program. E, request the city manager, request the Commissioner of Inspection Service to provide counsel to report one year after the implementation of the rental registry, use periodic inspection program evaluating the number of registered rental properties and the number of fines in the carryaway list for each of the city council district. And also, F, upon the communication, city manager recommend adoption of amendment to the rental registration program and residential rental unit periodic inspection program ordinances, recommend patches to two proposed ordinances amended include the following. Exemption of newly developed dwelling, single-family, two-family, three-family, multifamily that receives an occupancy permit on or after September 29, 2022, for a period of five years from the date of the occupancy permit. Any change in ownership during a five-year period requires the new owner registered within 30 days of taking ownership. Three owner-occupied, two- and three-family dwellings exempt from the program. Four, changes to the ordinance from the, from the Commissioner of Inspection Services and the city solicitor submitted to the committee on 5/1, including Department of Inspection Services retaining a list of exempted properties and penalty fine selection limit to each month constituting a fine, not daily. Exempt from the state sanitary code inspections, two- and three-family owner-occupied. Exemption from the inspection of any newly developed, single, I'm sorry, developed, single-family, two-family, three-family, multifamily rental units as identified in 1B, I'm sorry, 18C that receive an occupancy permit on or after September 29, 2022, for a period of five years from the date of the occupancy permit. Seven, upon the change of ownership, inspection must occur. Eight, owner-occupied, two- and three-family dwellings exempt from the state sanitary code inspections. Nine, additions to 19G relates to building owners' responsibility to obtain consent from the tenant occupant for the inspections. Ten, changes to the ordinance from the Commissioner of Inspection Services and city solicitor submitted to the committee on 5/1, including DIS retaining a list of exempted properties and penalty fine section limited to each month constituting a fine, not daily. And 11 editorial stylistic changes were also made for formatting purposes. And this was held, so Counselor Merrill Carlson? I think that's, it's all of them.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, this has been going on for quite some time. There is a tremendous amount of passion for the rental registry on both sides. I just want to start, Mr. Chairman, by certainly saying to people is that this committee worked with the administration. We did not, and let me repeat, we did not weaken anything. We worked with the administration for all of the changes, which, by the way, the changes that are in the rental registry is, there was a question about constitutionality. And the constitutionality is a major player in this rental registry. Whether we agree or disagree, Mass. general law clearly states that we cannot go in without permission. So that change was made to the rental registry by a unanimous vote of the committee. The manager and his administration and working with the assistant city solicitor, that language was brought forward to us as a committee. Again, we cannot just say that we as a city are going to say to our inspectional service folks that they have the right to go into anybody's home. We as a city need to have permission, and that permission needs to come from the home, the individual who is renting those spaces. So again, the change was made because the issue was brought up by several of the people who were in the audience questioning the constitutionality of the rental registry. Mr. Chairman, the committee did their due diligence with, and I repeat, with the administration and with the city, the assistant city solicitor. The other piece of this rental registry that was changed, and I certainly do not believe in any way that this weakens the rental registry. New construction, whether you take the Cold that's just been built, the Revington that's just been built, or Alter on the Row, they have spent thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on all of these new buildings, new apartments coming into the city. So again, to say that those folks would not have to register for five years on these brand-new buildings, I do not believe weakens this rental registry at all. Again, this was something working with inspectional services and working with the administration. Mr. Chairman, this committee was tasked with giving this ordinance that was sent to the Economic Development Committee by this council. And I believe as a leader in this city that we, we as counselors, there's times that we need to compromise. And one of those compromises, Mr. Chairman, is for the three-and-under owner-occupied. There were all kinds of different proposals that were submitted at the committee level. And again, Counselor Russell, for one, had put forth a six-and-under owner-occupied. The committee chose to do the three-and-under owner-occupied. I believe if you look back in the records from this council, that you would find that Counselor King had put forward something to the effect of owner-occupied and not having to register for the rental registry, which was way back in 2020. Mr. Chairman, this is, as this rental registry ordinance, this is how this came out of committee. It came out of committee unanimously. It also, I would stand here and say to you that working with the administration, working with the city manager, working with the city solicitor, and certainly working with the folks from inspectional services, it has been a long time coming, Mr. Chairman. As some folks have stated, this is something that we have been trying to pass on this council since 2020. Clearly, this is something that this council does want to pass this ordinance. So hopefully tonight, all of my colleagues can support the rental registry with the new amendments. The other piece of this that was, it was not, and again, let me be clear, it was not put in the ordinance, but there is something there to say that, could we hire outside inspectors? Which is not unusual, Mr. Chairman, because other communities have hired outside inspectors. It doesn't mean that you get any less. It means that, is it something that certainly homeowners can do by hiring their own inspector, which would have to be a licensed inspector? And yes, Mr. Chairman, there is talk about this city, about the length of time that it will take for us to go through and inspect all of our housing stock. Again, there is nothing in this rental registry that prohibits any, prohibits the city of Worcester, if there is a complaint and it is sent in to inspectional services for any health and safety reason, that they can't go in under the 110 inspections. And I would ask through you, Mr. Chairman, just for the city manager to verify what I just said.
Mr. Manager?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, through any, whether there's any concerns, any issues that, requests that come up through the residents or complaints, our inspectors are dispatched to go and resolve these issues with the property owners and inspect the properties. Related to the 110 inspections, under Mass. general law, we're required to do 110 inspections every, every five years. And so every three-decker in the city, two-family, et cetera, are not exempt, they're not exempt from the 110 inspections. And that's required by the state law, not within the rental registry. The purpose of the rental registry was to try to combine both programs because of the challenges that we had in finding property owners within the 110 inspections process. Because of the challenges in that process, we created the rental registry to try to give us a way to register property owners and do both programs together. However, we are not exempt as a community, as a municipality, from having to do 110 inspections. And properties are required, and inspectional services are required to work with the landlord to get, and, and within the 110 inspections, and I try to get correction from our inspector, head inspector over there, Lee Hall, under 110 inspections, we don't even need authority from the residents to go and inspect the property in general. We just need to make sure the landlord is aware. We work with the landlord to inspect the general areas of the property. But we don't even need the tenants, on the rental registry, we are requiring tenants to provide that, that waiver or that form or some clause that allows them to, allows us to go into their, into their unit. So there's, there's two differences in terms of the rental registry program and 110 inspections. What we're trying to do is to try to achieve both and combining both programs to be more effective in the way we inspect our properties.
Thank you.
Turn your second five to-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you, Mr. Chairman, to the city manager, what is the number of folks who have already registered in the rental registry? Do we have that number?
Mr. Manager?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, I would default to Lee. She probably has a better number. I know we're over 30,000, but she probably has the number.
It should be on.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Good evening, through the Chair. The numbers we have are, we have 9,000 registrations. Of that, we have plus 22,000 units. 1,400 are non-rental registrations, which might be a single-family owner-occupied like myself. And we have, I have some notes here, probably 1,500 that are owner-occupied. And those would be buildings and units. So probably 4,500 rental units- So probably 4,500 rental units in an owner occupied home. So 22,000, 9,000 registration, 22,000 units that are rentals.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, through you to the manager, so given that the new language in the rental registry has been put forth with owner occupied, three-and-under, that they do not have to register at this point, and I know that there's many who have already registered and who have already paid. So through the chair to the manager, would it be advantageous for us to hold off on the date until September 1st so that we could look at those who have already registered that didn't need to register? Could you share with me what that process would be?
Mr. Manager?
Through the chair, to the council, it all depends on what happens tonight, on getting this order, this ordinance passed. If this, this amendment is passed tonight, we will need some time to rectify those situations. And so we, you know, if, if that is the case, then I would ask that we give us some time to, at least September 1st, for us to be able to rectify those and deal with some of the changes related to the current ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would make that in a form of a motion.
That we?
That we would amend it to give the city until September 1st, given, if, obviously, that is, if this passes by council tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counsel Hajiay?
Sure.
I don't think your microphone's on.
To say that I'm frustrated and disappointed, and I've used that word over and over again about so many policies that this council has tried to weaken and make ineffective, and this is precisely one of those instances for me. I, I don't doubt that the committee worked very hard with the administration. That doesn't mean that the outcome of this specific amendment is actually a, a, a policy that makes sense, first of all, but most importantly, that centers our most vulnerable residents. Through the chair to Ms. Hall, could you tell us exactly how many owner occupied units are you aware of right now that we have in the city of Worcester?
That's an impossible, I'm sorry, through the chair, to the counselor, I think it's an impossible ask because we don't have all of that information.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I thought so too, because I went on a chase, speaking to Mr. McGurthy, trying to do my own research. We had a resident who actually matched some of the parcels and properties and all the information that we have online, precisely to chase that number, because we do not have an idea of who owns housing stock in Worcester and whether they actually live in the, in the units that they occupy. And I may be, I may be the, one of the few people on this council who may have forgotten, or who may not have forgotten, why we have this ordinance in the first place. I'd like to remind council, without my whiteboards, I wish I had brought them today, that former Council Wally brought this to council specifically because he was advised also by housing advocates that do this work and understand the violations that happen in our city, so that we can have an actual tally of, of who owns housing stock in Worcester. Most importantly, how do we make sure that those homeowners have access to grant programs, information, education, and most importantly, that the tenants who are in these buildings are protected? Ms. Hall, through the chair, you told me during budget hearings that one of the issues that you guys encounter all the time is that you're relying on people coming to you and, so basically a complaint run process. Is that true?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Ms. Hall?
And through the chair, what are the limitations of that current process?
Ms. Hall?
Well, through the chair, I would say it's a very reactive process, and so we don't know about violations until we've actually had a complaint and we can go inside and actually see what the problem is. It's, so we can't be proactive in, you know, previewing these buildings prior to a problem. It's always after a problem arises.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And I have one more question, and then I'll conclude my remarks. Could you verify for me whether, under 110 inspections, my understanding, it could be a very limited understanding of the law, is that they do not, they only apply to three buildings, three-family units, and two-family units, correct?
Through the chair, I believe the 110 inspections are for three families and above.
Three families and above. So that means that under this current amendment, through the chair, we would exempt two units and single-unit rentals from the 110 inspections?
No. No units that are required to be inspected through the 110 inspections will be exempt. They'll all be inspected under the 110 inspections.
Even if they're, if they're not included in the registry?
Correct.
One big thing that's missing from this conversation is that, at least the wording of the amendment says that two- and three-family dwellings should be exempt from the state sanitary code inspections. Could you tell us what that state sanitary code inspection does?
Ms. Hall?
Through the chair, the state sanitary code is the minimum standard for habitation, and it's things like lights outside, handrails, steps in, in good condition. It would be smoke detectors, it would be locks, it would be screens, windows that open, close, and lock as intended, floors that are easy to clean and smooth, hot water, heat, cold water, outlets that work, lights that work, the required number of outlets and lights that are supposed to be there, clear egresses, trash receptacles.
It's mandatory for somebody to have habitable dwelling.
Through the chair, that is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I don't have any more questions for you. But I do want to say that according to this amendment, I, I just want to make clear that at least my colleagues and the people watching are aware of what the consequences of adopting this amendment will be. And the consequence, consequences will be that we are blindly walking into redesigning an ordinance that doesn't give us the number of units that we will be exempting from sanitary inspections. That's precisely because we will be exempting anybody from registering. So in the future, what we're saying to the city of Worcester and those tenants living in those owner occupied units is that we essentially will rely on them to file complaints with the inspectional department. That is the reason why we have this rental registry in the first place, is to walk away from a complaint-driven process and to be proactive. So to say that we will exempt an unidentified number of units, which could be in the thousands, and we will tell those tenants, by the way, tenants, forget about, you know, us being proactive and making sure that you're living under good conditions, and also, property owners, you will be exempt from having to pay into the rental registry and getting access to information that the city will be sending once we have that information. Mr. Chairman, I really will speak purely here as someone who has done this work with tenants.
You're in your second five.
Yes, I will, I will finish by the time that you're allotting me. It is unconscionable to me that we have a policy that could save lives, that could be proactive, instead of asking the inspectional services what else they need to do their jobs, we're making their jobs harder. And their jobs and our jobs are to protect tenants from unsanitary conditions. We have zero evidence, we have zero facts and zero data, that homeowner occupied units that rent to our tenants are in compliance with the law. And the reason we don't have the data is because we're not collecting it. So I am going to absolutely vote against this amendment. I will vote against the amendment to add third-party companies, not because I think that's a good compromise, but because I think we need to give these folks the time to do their jobs and then come back and tell us whether they are unable to fulfill them. I will just close by saying that it's truly disappointing that at a time when we are facing, our tenants are facing the most pressure to find appropriate housing, that we have a policy that could make a difference for their well-being and to educate and to support our property owners, and we are saying that we are going to exempt upwards of 7,000 units or whatever the number is, just because we think that's the right thing to do. I don't see any evidence, I don't see any numbers, I don't see any best practices that follow this recommendation. And for that reason, and the other reason I mentioned above, I will vote no.
Thank you. So seeing nobody else, we can, Counsel Bergman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody's expectations probably are different as far as what we started out doing with the rental registry and what the final product now may be. But I do know that for at least my own expectations, you know, I wouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater, I think there's a lot of compromises here, and I think there's a lot of positive. There are some things I remain concerned about. I think putting the onus on the property owner to get the tenants to agree to allow entry without probable cause is, is not going to be an ideal situation. I think we're going to lose out on a lot of units, on the ability to inspect. But let me just say, when it comes to the issue of the owner occupied, I, I think it's a good, it's a good change. And let me say why I think it's a good change. I think it's completely unrealistic, and I would have been arguing misleading, to suggest that the sooner we start this, the sooner we're going to get to every unit. We've been told every time we've asked, how long is it going to take? It's going to take five years. It's going to take up to five years to get all these units inspected. So if we're going to remove a number of owner occupied units, which arguably, common sense would say, you'd be hard pressed to find somebody foolish enough to maintain a property that they live in in a dangerous way. That's not to say there aren't some, there very well could be, but they're far going to be outnumbered by properties that are not owner occupied, that really need to be get, to be looked at quicker and sooner. So the less number of owner occupied units that don't have to be inspected, maybe we can get to them in four years, maybe we can get to them in four and a half years, but we don't have to inspect all the units and take the entire five years. To say up to five years is proactive, I think is, is, the intent is there, but it's not realistic. It's going to be better than waiting for a tenant to call a complaint in, yes, that's true, but to say that we're going to catch a problem in time every time, even though it might take up to five years, just to me is not realistic at all. So I support the amendments, I think they make good sense, I think it's a compromise. I probably would not have voted to support this in the initial vote if I knew it was going to turn out to what it is today, because quite frankly, I think it's incredibly important to have the units registered. I think it's incredibly important to know who's living where and the layout of a lot of these properties for fire safety and public safety issues. But I have lots of issues with the constitutionality and the practicality of getting into these units, which require consent. At the end of the day, as I started off saying, I'm not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater, we have to vote on this as a package, I'm going to support the amendments, something is better than nothing. I think getting to perfect and throwing out good is a mistake, and I'll support the amendments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counsel King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really quickly, through the chair, to the administration, do we have a working definition or criteria for establishing or identifying what a proper, problem property landlord is? Do we have any sort of criteria to the chair by which we establish that a landlord is a problem property landlord, through the chair?
Mr. Manager? Ms. Hall?
Hello?
Ms. Hall?
Through the chair, a working definition, I would say a problem property is a property that at any given time is creating a nuisance, is draining property values with blight or slum, is creating some negative health issues for a tenant, and is draining city resources with either public safety resources, or inspectional service resources, or other resources, DPW resources, any of those.
Thank you. And through the chair, to the administration, is that a formalized, written definition or criteria, through the chair?
Mr. Manager?
Through the chair, to the council, no, there's not a formalized.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the city manager comes back with a report to be sent to Mr. Operations if the mayor deems that that's appropriate, by which we establish criteria to identify problem, to identify what we would call problem property landlords, Mr. Chairman. And the reason I say this is that the last time we had a discussion about this, I had asked how we track those properties, and I didn't really get the answers I was looking for, Mr. Chairman. And that being said, what I'd like to see moving forward at some point in time is when we have someone that we identify as such, and it's an LLC, or it's an individual that has multiple land holdings, I'd like to see all of their properties reviewed, quite frankly. You know, I, I think this sort of approach prioritizes, and it's a systemic thing that we do not have in place, Mr. Chairman. That being said, with regards to this work, I want to commend the Housing Coalition, I want to commend my colleagues and professionals such as Counsel Hajiay and others who have, this has been their profession, on all the work that they've done. On the face of this, I want to be clear, and I've said this many times, I don't know if it's, you know, because of my experience in life, but I personally don't ever want government in my home for any reason. That's the way I grew up, that's the way I came about in this country and in this city. That being said, I understand that there's, there's parameters and there's expectations, Mr. Chairman. You know, I certainly want to commend the work of the Economic Development Committee that they've done on this, and I do want to, you know, state that I did in fact vote against this coming out of committee the last time, prior to this, the last term, because of questions, and I wanted owner occupied exempt. And the reason I wanted that, Mr. Chairman, was my understanding, and my question to the chair to the administration is, my understanding was that based on research, that owner occupied dwellings fare better in terms of upkeep, maintenance, and, you know, impact on surrounding neighborhoods. So I would just ask for the chair to the administration if they could speak to whether or not that's their understanding based on their research of owner occupied dwellings, or if, am I in error?
Ms. Hall?
Through the chair, I, I would not necessarily agree with that. I got two hoarding cases today, complaints, owner occupied properties.
What does the research show, is what I'm asking, not the anecdotal?
I, I'm not sure what that research would show, in all honesty, through the chair. My years of experience tell me that I see a lot of deferred maintenance throughout the city in owner occupied properties.
And away from the research, what's, what, what do you feel the causes of those things with regards to owner occupied dwellings?
I think it could be some costs, I think it could be some bad experiences with either tenants or contractors, family members, we've seen it all.
Yes, okay. Again, you know, that was my understanding. I'd like a report back, Mr. Chairman, just for validation and what have you regarding what the research shows on owner occupied residents, based on what I previously mentioned, upkeep, maintenance, condition of the housing, impact on the surrounding neighborhood, unless there's someone else that can speak to that research. If not, that would be my order, Mr. Chairman. In addition to that, you know, the state sanitary code inspections is looking for an exemption. Through the chair to the administration, is that something within our purview? Like, can we circumvent state sanitary code inspections as merely required an ordinance, through the chair?
Mr. Manager? Ms. Hall? Ms. Hall?
My apologies to the chair, can you repeat the question, please?
One of the things here is indicating, and number five, that we exempt from state sanitary code inspections, two- and three-family owner occupied, and I'm asking if that's within our purview, does it require mere ordinance, or do we have the authority to circumvent state sanitary code inspections, through the chair?
Ms. Hall?
Through the, through the chair, the rental registry is a city ordinance, so I believe we have the ability to exempt from the state sanitary code inspections through the, the ordinance as it's written. We cannot exempt the 110 inspections.
Mr. Manager? Oh, you can lie down. Oh, you can like, Mr. Manager?
Through the chair, to the council, I was just going to reiterate that. We cannot exempt the 110 inspections, that's a state, but we, within the state, with the state sanitary code inspection, that is solely related to, to the ordinance that we establish as a city, so then the city has the ability to exempt within that ordinance.
You and your second five?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is 10F and 10E, correct? 10D, I mean?
10D, E and F, yep.
10D and F?
10D, E and F.
And E, okay. On 10D, I've been asked this question for quite some time, I haven't gotten an answer. And the research that I've done indicates that allowing third parties the ability to complete inspections makes sense when the city doesn't have the capacity to perform the work. And I've continually asked that question, because I don't think we have the capacity. But I've yet to hear that from the folks that do the work, or from the administration, Mr. Chairman, and I would need that information. So that's my question through the chair. You know, to privatize city work, it's not something that I do wantonly or recklessly. To privatize that work requires the fact that we're unable to do that because we don't have the capacity. So if someone could speak to 10D from the administration?
Mr. Manager?
Through the chair, to the council, based on the administration and the department's analysis, and they're based on the five positions that we've added to the Housing Division, we feel confident that we can do this, we want to evaluate within the next year or two to see if this, do we need more staff, do we need to increase overtime, do we need to look at options of, of third party? But right now, we do have the, the staff in place, and we feel strongly that we're confident that we can do this. The person who leads the department is Lee Hall, she leads that actual division. So Lee, if you want to answer a few questions, that would be helpful too, just to confirm.
Sure, yes, we have vamped up all our inspectional teams, we have inspectors at the ready, we do systematic sweeps now, twice a year, we, we do inspections all the time. The actual inspection is nothing new to us, we do them all day, every day, and we've already set up a schedule of how many we want to do, we're looking to achieve about, let's see, I think it's going to be about nine thousand a year, that's, that's the hope, of units, not buildings, units.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, policy, procedure and operations, has that been collectively bargained at this time, and is all of that what you're mentioning formalized in policy, through the chair?
Ms. Hall?
Through the chair, I believe it is, it's all during regular business hours.
That's not the question.
Mr. Manager?
Through the chair, to the council, this does not change the conditions of the work. The inspectors will be conducting the typical inspections that we'll be doing, it doesn't change the conditions of the work, so there's nothing that we need to bargain.
None of this has been collectively bargained?
Excuse me, what did you say? We're going to hear you.
I'm sorry, so he's saying, none of this has been collectively bargained?
It does not need to be collectively bargained.
The new possessions, okay. Mr. Chairman, I do have some questions about this. I've never thought that we had the capacity to do this, quite frankly. I don't believe, and I've asked questions of the 110 inspections since 2019, I haven't gotten answers, and I do not believe it. You know, we put these five positions in play, what, two, three fiscal, maybe two fiscal years ago? And I don't know what they've been doing since then, but we're still behind. And, you know, we've had the leader of this department exit expeditiously, and I have a lot of questions, Mr. Chairman. And I'm looking forward to hearing back on 10D from the manager, I will be voting in favor of that, because I expect an outlined process that indicates capacity, and whether or not we're going to actually do this. Because I don't believe, quite frankly, that we have, we're going to be able to pull it off. And Mr. Chairman, just as a point of order, 10F, are we able to pull out each individual aspect of this and vote it, or is it an all or nothing thing? You know, I certainly would like to see us take, take these, these items separately that are within this one recommendation from Economic Development.
Yeah, it's an all or nothing recommendation from the Economic Development, so that's how we vote it, up or down?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, my motion would be that we take out, my motion would be to separate number three, and separate number five out of 10F as a separate motion, that would be my request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. These, these are all being taken together, so it's an up and down motion?
Mr. Chairman, it's, I made a motion to separate, we do this often, on different matters, we take things separately, we can take them collectively, and I've made a motion that we take those two out, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Solicitor?
Through the chair, to the mayor, so maybe the solicitor can jump in, but my understanding is, this was the recommendation of the administration, based on the charter, the council either votes up or down, anything brought before the administration, so let's see if I'm not mistaken.
Through the chair, the ordinances before you, it's all already encompassed, all the different changes are in there, and so there's an ordinance prepared that has these changes as one vote. The council, in the meantime, has raised a request, so it'll be up to the council to either support or deny pulling things out separately, but right now, as it stands now, it's, it's an ordinance that's sitting before you incorporating all the changes that came out of the committee.
Okay, okay. So the motion then is to take three and five out of this and vote them separately?
And eight, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, it's the sanitary code. Three, five and eight.
Three, five and eight, is that okay with everybody? Or, what's that? We can take three, five and eight out of order, so, so the motion then would be, if this, if we want to go through with this, is to take all the other items collectively, except three, five and eight?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, is that an amendment? Is that what you're talking about?
That's not an amendment to anything, you just want to separate those out, but it would be an amendment, correct?
So would you vote on the amendment first?
Yes. Okay, so we'll vote on three, five and eight separately, and we'll take those first?
Another point of order, Mr. Chairman, are we voting to approve those items, or are we voting to pull them out and have a separate discussion about them?
I think we're going to pull them out and vote, first we'll pull them out, then we'll take a vote on them, okay? So the motion is to pull them out, roll call. Council Bergman?
No.
Council Calorio?
No.
Council Hagi?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Merrill Carlson?
No.
Council Nguyen?
Yes.
Council Ojeda?
Yes.
Council Basillo?
No.
Council Russell?
No.
Council Tumi?
No.
And Mayor Petty? No. Okay, so the motion is to take these collectively on a roll call, roll call.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, as presented by the committee and the administration?
Correct.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Calorio?
Yes.
Council Hagi?
No.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Merrill Carlson?
Yes.
Council Nguyen?
No.
Council Ojeda?
Yes.
Council Basillo?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Tumi?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. The motion is to take 10D?
Mr. Chairman? 10D?
10D?
Yeah. Just would like a report back from our solicitor regarding the rental registry, and regarding whether we can, a written opinion, whether or not we can circumvent the state sanitary code, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, so take 10D along with the orders. Motion is to adopt. All those in favor, post so ordered. 10E?
Can we do a roll call on that?
Motion is to adopt. All those in favor, opposed or ordered?
Can we do a roll call on 10D, please?
Which one?
10D.
10E?
10D.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, 10D, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Calorio?
Yes.
Council Hagi?
No.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Merrill Carlson?
Yes.
Council Nguyen?
No.
Council Ojeda?
Yes.
Council Basillo?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Tumi?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Council Russell?
Just a point, just another point of order, did the manager say that he's putting off until September, what was previously to be June, the end of June or beginning of July? Could he clarify that just for the public?
Mr. Manager?
No.
Through the chair, to the council, I believe Council Carlson made a motion for us to do that, and so that would be a recommendation that I would put forward, for us to hold off until September 1st while we make all the changes necessary to this particular ordinance.
What's that? So 10E, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Calorio?
Yes.
Council Hagi?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Merrill Carlson?
Yes.
Council Nguyen?
Yes.
Council Ojeda?
Yes.
Council Basillo?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Tumi?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. And we have a number of motions, Council Merrill Carlson has to hold off until September 1st, manager's willing to do that, Council King has a few motions on the establishing the criteria, the housing.
Can I speak on Council Carlson's motion?
Which one? I opted to extend it to September 1st, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to speak on that as pertains to the rental registry, and I'm wondering, information that was sent to me regarding owner occupied homes, in addition to my motion, you know, the numbers that were garnered from folks in the community indicate that, you know, from their numbers, that there's, based on their numbers, that forty-eight percent of three families have an owner occupied address that matches the property address, that sixty-three percent of two families have an owner occupied address, and the numbers that they gathered were just shy of twenty-five hundred people for, who are owner occupied for three families, just around twenty-three hundred owner occupied with matching addresses of two families, Mr. Chairman. And my understanding is that they, they did this based on Worcester parcel data that's available online circa 2020 via Mass GIS, they did some cross tabulation of land use categories and owner addresses that focused on two and three family properties. I'm just wondering through the chair if any of that makes any sense to the administration? I spoke briefly with Sammy Dunn, Mr. Dunn, and I'm just wondering if those numbers make any sort of sense, I'm not asking you to validate them, but does that make sense, through the chair?
Who's that? Ms. Hall?
I apologize, through the chair, could you repeat it again?
Want me to repeat all that? That's going to be my ten minutes. So basically, there was an analy- analyzation of property records?
Right.
And what they did, they looked at Worcester parcel data that's available online circa 2023 via Mass GIS, did cross tabulation of land use, land use categories and owner addresses focusing on two and three family properties, and what they found was that the property records show that around eighty-five hundred or so two and three family properties exist in Worcester, and of those, forty-eight percent were three families that had owner occupied addresses, around twenty-three hundred or so homes, and that sixty-three percent of two family homes have owner, are owner occupied, around the number of twenty-three hundred. I'm just wondering if any of that makes any sense, like their process, I'm not asking to validate the numbers, I'm just asking if the process makes sense.
Through the chair, it makes a little sense.
Okay.
More so for the two families than the three families.
Thank you, and so my question to the chair is, how do we verify or validate that it is an owner occupied property? How does that work, through the chair?
So through the chair, the easiest and best way would be to go there and knock on the door, right, and see if they're there. I can tell you through the chair that many times we send notices to owner, what's supposed to be an owner occupied home, only to have it come back to us that they're not there. They may have a mailbox, but they don't live there. We do a lot of work, checking the registry of deeds, looking for a declaration of homestead, we work with the water billing and a lot of properties to find owners that are supposed to live there that do not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a process question, so once, we've just voted this ordinance, it goes out, I believe, to advertise, and then it comes back, we got to vote it again, is that right?
My understanding, correct.
So through the chair, to whomever, if you could just explain to the public what this vote is, and what the vote is when it comes back? Because this is not voting an ordinance, it's voting to advertise, is that right, through the chair, if you could just explain that to the public?
Mr. Cork?
Through the chair, to the council, correct, so what, the vote that took place tonight is to advertise, we have to advertise the full ordinance in the paper, and it comes at the July meeting for a final vote.
Thank you, because I know that the newspaper sometimes mischaracterizes these things, this is a vote to advertise, Mr. Chairman, and what I would make a motion of is, I would like for the, you know, for me to vote this again forward when it comes back, I had to make sure that, as I mentioned earlier, we're doing our due diligence, I like for the administration to come back with a report to be sent to MLO, so at least I know it's in the process, that we're going to be establishing a ways and means of identifying and verifying owner occupied. I do not think it's realistic to knock on all those doors, but I do think we need a process, if we're going to exempt and provide, you know, a benefit to folks who are owner occupied dwellings, we promote owner occupied, first time buyers and all of those things. We need a process in place that ensures that what we're doing is accurate and effective, Mr. Chairman, so that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman, is that the administration come back in short order and compare what they do in other places to verify to the best of our ability owner occupied statuses in a process by which, or a request to have folks report back when they are no longer occupied. I don't know if that's possible, but I'd like the exploration to occur. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, so the, you get a report there too, but the motion right now is to take these motions along with the putting off to February, September, September 1st. All those in favor, opposed or ordered? Okay.
With respect to all the items related to the rental registry that were voted on tonight, I know we have to advertise, but can we do a motion for reconsideration, just to?
Okay, collectively, a motion to reconsider, roll call.
Council Bergman?
No.
Council Calorio?
No.
Council Hagi? Council King?
What is this again, please?
To reconsider.
No.
Council Merrill Carlson?
No.
Council Nguyen?
No.
Council Ojeda?
No.
Council Basillo?
No.
Council Russell?
No.
Council Tumi?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No. Council Hagi was, no, council, council Hagi is a no? Okay. Okay, let's go back now to the manager's evaluation. Ms. Hazard, did you want to say a word? I'm sorry. Motion is to suspend the rules, I was asked to suspend the rules, so Ms. Hazard, there's your name, city residents, you have two minutes.
I did want to say something about the manager's evaluation. Last week, I did say that I thought he was doing a fantastic job, and I, I want to say that again this week. I did have a question about finances, but that is something that exists in every city. Running a city is like running a household, a budget. We have to be careful where we put the money and where we take the money from. So I think we have to be very, very careful with that. And I also wanted to speak on AJ, Charles Luster's request for the city council to adopt the attached resolution to support a black community center, to help build black community. Ever since the East Side, years and years ago, was broken up with redevelopment, far redevelopment, the black community has been dispersed, and it's very difficult to get black folks together again. Now, we have been in the city of Worcester since the seventeen hundreds, we watch groups come into the city of Worcester and get the We watch groups come into the city of Worcester and get the Italian Community Center, the African Community Center, uh, all different nationalities and groups that come here just recently. And we need to reunite black people. We tried to get black neighborhoods, and that has been impossible. We've gotten a few Latinx neighborhoods, and it's impossible for the blacks to get back to where we have been years back before the redevelopment for the expressway. That dispersed us all over the city.
Can you wrap up your comments?
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. So, what I'm asking is that you take this item very, very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are going to go to... First time in business communications, city manager transmitting information communication relative to my self-evaluation of the work and conference of my administration for fiscal year 2024. You want to go this way? You want to go for? You want to go second? What's that? Well, it depends. Okay. I'm, uh, whoever raises their hand, okay? So, I'll go first. What's that? I'm waiting for, well, obviously, I get your point, Ms. Tumi. Yes, we should wait for the manager to come back and, uh, and, uh, I know who he's called. What's that? Okay. We'll take two minutes recess and we'll come right back. Oh, he's right here. He's right here. We'll have to re- okay, two minute recess. People, okay. We've been here an hour, two hours, so, okay.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. So, Mr. Cork. So, I guess I'll go first, then let's raise our hands if people want to call and go from there.
Anything else? Anyone else? No? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry how to start, but I just want to thank, I do agree with you, probably start laughing, but Miss Hazard, I think, as the manager, I think you're doing a fantastic job. So, I do appreciate you the work that you've done by the city manager Batista and this whole team here, despite of some multiple crises that really have occurred in the city of Worcester, both at the state and the federal levels. And the city manager has not had it easy in the past year and a half. There's been a lot of challenges here, but I think the point I'd like to make on that is that whatever the situation is, I always think you handle it with class and integrity, which I think is important. You want the answers, the call, make yourself available in the community when needed. You want to go out into the community when asked and on your own. I attend multiple communities to address concerns around safety in the community and issues pertaining to the youth. I have seen firsthand use empathy, which is important in my mind, to allow people in spaces to express their own concerns. He has communicated in ways that is accessible and respectful of the people's need to be heard. City manager has been quick to offer solutions to unexpected challenges, most recently when it comes to youth cuts, by providing $1.5 million when asked, and then we'll get to the budget, and able to do that, which means opportunity for others, our youth, and meaningful City manager has been focused in this team on building a future for Worcester style with the youth and working with experts to create data-driven, evidence-based solutions that will sustainability address ongoing problems in the city. And that's what you're, I think, one of your strong points is. And that's what you did as assistant city manager, as a project manager, and I think it's going to pay dividends in the city in the future. City manager has been working with leading experts in the field pertaining to issues such as traffic violence and housing production, which is two big issues that we've talked about in this council before, with different perspectives, and I think you're doing a good job on that. And housing is one of the, whether it be the unhoused, whether it be affordable housing, whether housing for everyone, is a huge issue. And in fact, there was a big conference this morning, HUD was there, from Washington, from Boston, and also HHS was there, Secretary Augustus was there, and he liked coming to Worcester, all these organizations, the federal and state levels, because they think we have a good quality team when it comes to housing and trying to afford and trying to address these issues. And that's really because I think your leadership, leadership of the council and the department heads you have in place to take care of that. For areas of improvement, there might be an opportunity to work into more expedited timelines when it comes to certain issues. Recently, I felt the process to find contracts to implement proposed safety changes, the Mill Street took longer than I would have preferred, but you talked about that last week, and taking responsibility for that. And I'm cognizant of the fact that you need bidders in the midst of ongoing staffing shortages, supply chain issues, and expectations of the administration, some of these are out of your control. At the same time, I think, when these type of issues involve neighborhoods, some of the remediation would be helpful in these matters. However, I'd be remiss if I did not provide the feedback, and that's why I'm providing it. It's also my experience that the city manager has been quick to intervene in acute emergent situations that can have long-term impacts. The city's resources have been allocated in practical ways to combat issues of homelessness, while the city will need thousands of units to keep the demand for housing. Over 700 new units were brought to the city because of the administration's ability to work, collaborate with partners in the private and the public sectors, which I think is very important. Although non-fatal shootings have decreased in the last year, the string of homicides in the past few months are a shock to the community, I thought the city manager acted quickly to work and collaborate with the administration and partners in the private and the public sectors to intervene, which is one of our strengths as a body here. And the crime gun intelligence unit has already removed nine weapons from the streets and nearly 20 arrested and detained. Departments have been flourishing with the city manager Batista at the helm with his investment in employee experiences. He's proposed to work towards ensuring that his administration compensation is equitable, serves as a small example of dedication in ensuring that employees are satisfied at work. We continue to make improvements that address the ongoing needs of the growing city, with the highest population in its history. There's no doubt in my mind that you love this city, you grew up in this city, you care about it, and it shows every single day, and it shows to the people of Worcester. And I believe that you and your team have been doing tremendous work. Of course, I just want to recognize some of all the different teams here that make a difference here in the city of Worcester. And whether it be the sustainability and resilience team, transportation mobility, whether it be all your cabinet heads and all your employees and department heads, I think are doing a good job in the city of Worcester. Doesn't mean we don't make mistakes, that things, people say we're not transparent. Government's pretty transparent, because when we make a mistake, it's all over the news in a second. So, it's always out there in the public. And I know I-
Second five minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm glad we're timing this. Okay. And I just want to say that to the department heads, and I want to thank you for all your work. I really appreciate that. And every single day you go out there, and it's not easy in today's climate to be a government employee. It's not easy at all. It's a hard job to do. But we try to do the best we can do, and I think, look at the city over the last 10, 15 years, it's just grown in the right direction in the last year and a half, it certainly has. Police, I think it's done a great job, very community-oriented, trying to get the handle on things, so I want to thank the chief and his department, the police, the police themselves in general, and I think everybody who works in that department. Same with the fire chief and the fire department and everything they do. DPW, Jay Fink and his group, what they do every single day in the city of Worcester. Doesn't mean we have our challenges, like, we do. Whether it be the streets, not the way we want them to be, where sometimes the snow isn't removed properly, but throughout their work and every single day, the DPW workers, so I want to thank them for that. Quality Life Team, which I missed last year, I want to thank them for what they do. They make a big difference here in the city of Worcester. And whether it be working with the public health, or it be working with police, or working with the city councillors, the administration, they seem to be all over the place, so I appreciate everything they do. One of the departments that I think is important is the finance department in the city of Worcester. To me, that exceeds every single time. It's probably one of, this council should be proud of what it does, working with the city manager Tim McGurthy, and making sure that our finances are in order, where we have reserves are in order. It makes a difference when we go into the rating agencies, or we want to borrow money. It's one thing we do good, we push the limits, no question. The council pushes the limits on trying to borrow. But Tim McGurthy does a good job managing us, managing our finances, we've done a good job for the last several years, so I want to thank that, I want to thank you for that too. And I just want to end with this, again, to the minister, Mr. Manager, thank you for your dedication to the city of Worcester, to your department heads and your whole team, and all the employees in the city of Worcester for the work they do. And just one more thing, if we can, I know we have a lot of contracts out there, if we can settle those over the next few months, it'd be very helpful here to the city of Worcester too. And I want to point one thing, which I was pretty proud of in some sense, like, I go around the city a lot, but I want to thank also the POCS department. Our POCS is the best, I think, I've seen in a number of years. And it's always been pretty good, but really good. And when you see all the people using the POCS here in the city of Worcester, it makes a big difference in every single neighborhood, every neighborhood. So, I want to thank them for the work that they do also. Hopefully I didn't miss anybody, I know we have a public health department who does a great job with the unhoused here in the city of Worcester, trying to find housing issues and health issues, so I want to thank them for the work they do also. If I miss somebody, I make an apology. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to go to at-large councillor Morris Bergman, followed by D5 councillor Tel Aziai, followed by two, again, at-large, and followed by Donna Clorio, at-large.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The difficulty of the reason why some of these evaluations, and I've been on the council a number of years now, are never easy, is because they're mixed with some objectivity and some subjectivity. So, I certainly try to be as objective as I can, but there's absolutely no way that there isn't some subjectivity that has to creep into the evaluations. With respect to financial management, I took some notes, they're part of the record of my evaluation. I didn't take notes in every category, but I took notes where I thought they'd be helpful for people to understand why I gave the manager the grade I gave, and also remind me on some good talking points on why I gave those grades. With respect to long-term financial plan, I do think the city's in a strong financial position. I do think that we've had some challenges, as many cities across the state, across the country have, and I think we've weathered those challenges well, which is a great reflection on the city manager. I would like to say that I would like to see, at times when there is surplus cash, that we do better with tax relief for some of our tax-paying residents. With respect to the bond rating, it's been consistently excellent, and that not only predates the current city manager, but also includes the current city manager's tenure, so he certainly deserves credit for being in a position, along with his staff, to help maintain that. With respect to energy and asset management, which I don't really quite know why it's under financial management, I would say that it's appropriate. I think the goals sometimes may be overly ambitious, but I do think the right people are in the right place to assess that, and I do think that all in all, with the financial management category, I would give the manager exceeds expectations. With respect to economic development, I do think the city's on course with its urban revitalization plan. I do think that we've had some challenges, as I said a moment ago, particularly not just Worcester, but we've had increased interest rates throughout the country, inflationary concerns, and despite all that, I do think there's a lot going on in the city of Worcester regarding urban revitalization. I do think when it comes to neighborhood revitalization, I would like to, and I've made this comment in the past, see more progress outside of the specific downtown area, and I'm sure the city manager would like to see this as well. I think areas like Lower Lincoln Street, Lower Pleasant Street are all areas that should reap the benefits of some of the progress downtown in the not-quite-year there yet. As far as development projects, as I've said, I think it's redundant, we're on course for those. Cultural activities, I think they're numerous and varied, and I haven't heard the manager turn a deaf ear to anybody suggesting other cultural activities that perhaps we haven't had in the past. With respect to housing initiatives, you know, this is where, subjectively, others may disagree, but I think there's been a good balance between what's doable and what's possible, and what potentially could be counterproductive. I know that it's not only a local issue, it's a state issue, it's a national issue. There is a shortage of housing, and I think we're doing the best we can. I think it's compounded by the fact that cities and towns around us perhaps aren't doing as much as they can, and I think when it comes to Worcester, we are doing well. I do think with respect to housing initiatives, that I would like to mention something that I've been, you know, proud to speak about, and I still think we'd never do enough, and that's with private homeownership. We can talk all we want about roofs over people's heads, and of course, that's an essential part of being able to survive, but when it comes to generational wealth, unless you own something, you're not going to be in a position to create generational wealth, and I think we could do more with helping people own their own homes, even with the higher cost of buying property in the city of Worcester. With respect to planning, conservation, job creation, I put meets expectations next to all of those. Transportation is an issue I wanted to talk about for a moment. You know, we have lots of discussions about traffic, Mill Street particularly, but in general, we talk about traffic all over the city. Mill Street happens to be the more recent conversation, but I think there's a tough balance and a reality that, you know, I'd like to just present, which is, the WRTA isn't where it needs to be. We're not Boston, we're not Brookline, we're not Cambridge, we're not Severmill. We don't have the ability to go from point A to point B on any given day with dependability and frequency. I couldn't do what I do in a day, and I think most of us couldn't, with the number of places throughout the city we have to be at, depending on a bus service. And that's not necessarily the manager's responsibility, because the WRTA has its own degree of independence, but it does reflect in some of the infrastructure ideas that I see being floated around. I think that sometimes they're overly ambitious, and they ignore the fact that motor vehicle transportation is still going to be in the majority mode of how we all travel in the city, at least unless and until the WRTA does a much better job being user-friendly. On this particular category, I gave the manager meets expectations. With respect to category three, management efficiencies and improvements, I'll glide through that rather quickly. I do think they've all been good to very good, and I gave the manager exceeds expectations. With respect to the final category, delivery of public services, public safety and special services, public works, economic development, health and human services, is that my, is that a buzzer of some sort for me to finish up? I gave manager all good to very good. I do want to pause, though, with human resources. And let me just say, in all the previous departments, goes without saying that I could not have given the manager good to very good comments if the departments and the department's heads didn't also act in a very positive and successful way to reflect on the manager's abilities. But when it comes to human resources, I do think, this is one issue that I just wanted to talk a little bit more about, because it almost switched my final grade from meets expectations to needs improvement. I did ultimately stick with meets expectations. But I do think when it comes, and the mayor alluded to it a moment ago, comes to union contracts, we really should not be going beyond a year to resolve these contracts. We've got one department that's been, I think, almost four years now without a contract. And I just think when we talk about a city family, when there are raises being given to other departments, it just reflects poorly our morale and upon the public's perception of what we're doing here at city government, when some significant parts of our employees are without a contract and other employees are getting what seems like significant raises. And let me just lastly say, when it goes back to raises, I don't begrudge what somebody makes if that's what market rate determines, but I would like to see in the future, any significant raises be tied, and I skipped this earlier, be tied to performance criteria, not just that's what the market would bear in other communities outside of Worcester. In that last category, with the exception of needing to improve, making sure that union contracts go up beyond a year, I gave the city manager a meet expectation. So, two exceeds expectations, one meet expectation without any hesitation, and one meet expectation, which could have gone either way. But I do think the manager's heart's in the right place, I do think there's always going to be a learning curve, even if the manager was working under the former city manager, and even though he's from Worcester, there's always new challenges that are unexpected. I'm willing to give the manager, you know, the benefit of the fact that he's listening to our critiques, and he's going to work to make sure that next year, all the categories that I judge him on will even be better. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Aziai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just start by saying, I am so sorry you have to sit through awkward, this awkward process. This is a very awkward process, but I don't like this evaluation form, so I veered away from some of its structure, because I find it completely inefficient and unhelpful tool to evaluate anyone. So, I will go through categories that I thought are important to me, and provide a little bit of narrative around these categories. So, I'd like to start with ongoing transparency and communication. I do have to say that there have been major improvements from previous administration related to transparency and communication. One good example is, there was a lot of controversy around pulling the checkbook offline. I know that you received a lot of calls, I know we received a lot of calls, and I appreciate the fact that you listened to public feedback, and you put it back online with some parameters around safeguarding privacy. Another example that I thought was good in terms of transparency and communication was submitting to council the rationale and thought process guiding the pay equity process for department heads, and steps the administration will follow to bring everyone's salaries up in different phases. I also forgot to, just through the chair, just extend my thanks to every single person in this room, all your staff, whether we agree or disagree sometimes, whether we have differences of opinions, you all work so hard, and just really, thank you so much for taking care of our residents and doing the invisible work that you do. I'd like to continue to say that, in terms of communication, some of the feedback, while your department, communications department has grown, and has been using more modern ways to disseminate information, such as blogs and videos, which is really cool, I still think residents are still frustrated regarding timely communication, particularly with road projects and traffic closures. We should be using any technology available for planning purposes and communicate changes as much in advance as possible to residents, specifically when multiple projects are planned and clustered in the same area of the city. A perfect example of this was the traffic jams and detours that affected multiple neighborhoods in District Five this past summer because of roadwork. For projects like Mill Street, the Mill Street configuration and pavement management, more coordinated and clear communication should be put in place next time to help residents understand the changes that will affect them. Importantly, I would like to see more communication regarding street work, for example, be vetted before going out to the public to avoid giving the wrong information. My second category is transportation and mobility, and I'd like to start by complimenting the Department of Transportation and Mobility for the excellent work that they have done. And, Mr. Manager, I really deeply value your commitment to reducing and eliminating traffic violence, and using that specific phrase, through Vision Zero and implementing complete street projects, a policy that I'd like to remind the city council, they adopted unanimously in 2017. The creation of DTM was a big progressive step forward, I know you had a lot to do with that, towards eliminating traffic deaths and injuries, and designing streets that accommodate vulnerable road users, not just cars. I applaud your strong commitment to the interim and long transformation of Mill Street and all the teams that worked with me to ensure the success of both Stafford Street and Mill Streets. My expectation, based on conversation with residents, is that your staff continue to engage with neighborhoods and communicate in a timely manner when significant projects like this take place in the future. Culture shifts to require patience and willingness to shape policy driven by data and professionals. You have demonstrated both patience and loyalty to data, best practices, and trained professionals to guide decision-making, rather than political wins on and off council. It's my expectation that you will continue strengthening the practice of holding in-district presentations about road redesign, and partnering with district councillors and neighborhood groups to address residents' concerns. I urge you, and I expect you, to continue prioritizing high-crash areas in District Five and across the city through a Vision Zero lens, and keep building a culture of centering vulnerable road users. We'll move on to DEI and racial equity. I understand that it was under the previous administration that several chief diversity officers resigned due to lack of support from the previous administration and a culture of resistance. You have now overseen three departments' racial equity audits, which have revealed that our staff are still experiencing racial animosity in the workplace, and our Black and Brown youth are disproportionately arrested. I appreciate that, as a former youth worker and someone who's done this work with you prior to our current positions, we understand that police departments are not meant to be youth workers. And to that end, I am glad that one of your first decisions as a city manager was to house the Shannon Grant within the Youth Opportunities Office where it should belong. Redirecting the focus of Youth Opportunities Office to do policy work related to youth development and violence prevention are excellent steps towards empowering this amazing department, and an amazing department in Raquel Castro Corzini running it, to do more systems work. I want to also applaud you and your team for instituting a paid family leave program for your employees after several of them urged you to do so. However, Mr. Manager, there is still a lot of work to be done here.
You're in your second five, too.
I didn't realize we had limits. Sorry.
Previous chairman, this-
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Go on, you're in the second five.
I apologize. I didn't really put a lot of work into making-
Okay, keep going.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
The chief diversity officer position is still vacant. The racial equity audit does not have a clear and transparent process attached to it regarding who will implement the recommendations, a specific timelines, progress benchmarks, and how the council and the public will be kept appraised of all this. The WPD audit doesn't capture the goals and frustrations of communities, particularly Black, Brown, Indigenous communities, things that I have heard since, before coming into elected office, them talk about decades. I don't think we need to wait another two years for CDO or the DEOJ findings to start implementing changes community leaders have asked for years. As we grapple with the realities of racial equity, particularly anti-Black racism, we need to resist any impulse to go slow or incrementally, rest our hopes on superficial changes that look good on paper but lack the political will and buy-in from all of us. Mr. Manager, we look to you to set the tone for dismantling practices that have been proven to be harmful to Black, Brown, Indigenous, LGBTQIA, people with disabilities, and low-wealth communities. And so, I challenge the administration to go beyond the racial equity audit recommendations and implement some of the decades-old recommendations offered by Black and Brown communities with the urgency they expect us to. My next category is community development and planning. I actually have a degree in this, so I can speak to it. In last year's evaluation, I talked about the need to pay more attention to our neighborhoods instead of constantly prioritizing downtown. Community development and planning for me means that we are improving the quality of life for all residents in all neighborhoods, including those struggling to hold on to their homes, those experiencing homelessness, being displaced by astronomical rents, or feeling the impacts of climate change. As you know, and prior to your arrival in District Five, one of my biggest goals and focuses has been redeveloping 195 Mill Street, aka Big D. I just want to thank Mr. Peter Dunn for being an amazing partner in helping me think through this. And so, I'm very glad, and I'm very proud, and very pleased that the designation of Big D as a UCH TIF zone will finally come to council and hopefully spur mixed-use development of this underdeveloped parcel. I have also had the expectation and goals, which has been reflected through all of our conversations, to kindle economic revitalization of Webster Square neighborhood through a master plan. Again, Mr. Dunn and I, along with Representative LaBeuf, and you have had multiple conversations about this. I still urge you and your administration to reconsider implementing an escalating fee to those underdeveloped properties that have not made any attempts to develop or sell, and which continue to draw taxpayer dollars and resources while affecting the quality of life for our residents. Neighborhood development in our poorest neighborhoods has always been left mostly to our CDCs, the most under-resourced entities, and the most adept at incremental development. I ask you, and this is a new ask, and I haven't mentioned this to you before in private, I urge you to include the CDCs in your economic coordinating council, which is now comprised of WBDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and NBI. We must not be timid placing higher expectations onto large-scale developers. They are benefiting greatly from what we have to offer, and our residents deserve to enjoy community benefits agreements from all of them. You have done an amazing job at creating efficiencies throughout several departments. However, I believe housing and homelessness should be their own division in order to align with what we know to be true. Ending homelessness and housing instability begins and ends with healthy, affordable housing. I have seen you in action, Mr. Manager, when you picked up the phone, whether it was the Washington Heights fire, or when we have been meeting regarding homelessness and trying to get landlords to open up units. I have seen firsthand you picking up the phone and begging landlords to make those units available. I am so grateful that you are that type of person. Please continue to do that. The RMB shelter is another case where I don't think it would have happened with anyone else. And the fact that you went above and beyond to make sure that we have an emergency shelter for our unhoused folks, it meant a lot to both the unhoused community, but obviously to me as one person sitting on this council. I believe that you have done a great job at creating a housing production plan, it's a very good step. However, I'm still unclear how we will fund this plan with just the federal funds we receive, which is why I urge you and Mr. Dunn to consider a local housing bond, like we, similar to the one that we funded, funded the ballpark, to fully fund all the housing initiatives and plans. The Affordable Housing Trust, while a great resource, will not fill the gaps that we face. I'm almost done. Public participation and engagement, this is something that I've talked about a lot, whether during the campaign or on this council floor. I think that you have done a really good job compared to other folks, asking for feedback regarding many initiatives, the Mobility Action Plan, Worcester Now Next, and the latest one is a strategic plan. The Mobility Action Plan was your now next, and the latest one is a strategic plan. However, we seem to have an ongoing challenge about utilizing public participation in decision-making. As of late, we've struggled with incorporating the Work Advisory Committees and Commissions. In talking to some of the members of these committees, they don't seem to always have the right information or access to it, even when their purview is explicitly stated in the charter, their purpose is not always clear to the public, and their recommendation sometimes not incorporated into decisions that affect our residents. It's my expectation, Mr. Manager, that this needs to shift to allow these committees to do their work unencumbered and strengthen their partnership with you. Increasing public participation means also getting out of City Hall, something that I have seen you do multiple times. I think our residents really appreciate seeing you, talking to you, being able to have access to you as a regular person rather than as a bureaucrat, and I encourage you to continue to do that, and not in a reactive manner, as we have been forced to have you come only when we have issues, but just as a presence into our neighborhoods. Take walks with us, bring your colleagues with you, bring the city manager, bring your staff. I think that's the best way to have access to our neighborhoods and listen directly to our residents. I'm going to mention climate change because I feel like this doesn't get enough attention. I am so proud, so proud of the work that we have done with the Green Worcester Plan under the leadership of our commissioner. We have advanced climate justice, but we must challenge ourselves to do all we can to improve every life of our residents, particularly those squeezed tight by high rents, unhealthy housing conditions, homelessness, and environmental degradation, as well as the impact of climate change. We need to be less afraid to have expectations for developers and utility companies to protect our environment and open spaces. Last year, you and your team worked super hard to pass the Specialized Stretch Code, but that didn't come easy. How developers would react drove the conversations, and we got caught in again centering their concerns rather than the reality that eventually we have to move away from fossil fuels. Those same interests will undoubtedly try to convince us that Worcester is not ready to join other several communities to enter the fossil-fuel-free demonstration project. But, Mr. Manager, as we've talked about with racial equity, homelessness, and poverty, we cannot afford to move in incremental steps while our seniors, children, and families can barely get through a week of sweltering heat wave. And in conclusion, oftentimes, we think of Worcester as a progressive city, but more often than not, our efforts to improve life for all residents, and specifically for those living paycheck to paycheck or without one, are hampered by the interests of those who want us, to have us believe that we're at the mercy of big developers, corporate landlords, slum landlords, unscrupulous investors, utility companies, and big corporations. Sometimes, progress is also obstructed by those who are satisfied with keeping things unruffled, quiet, in boxes, where we can have hard conversations about impactful policy. This past year, and most recently on the City Council floor, I have seen such efforts take away the opportunity to have a strong ADU ordinance. We barely got through the Specialized Stretch Code, preserving the integrity of complete streets work through the manufactured Mill Street chaos, and weakening one of the few tools we have, a rental registry, to protect the lives of our residents from fires and unhealthy housing. And I'm sure there will be more. Mr. Manager, I am a firm believer that regardless of how hard and messy politics gets, we should always hold the courage to act boldly and resist impulse to regress, because moving forward messes up with decades-old beliefs, expectations, and rules. I have a lot of faith in you, and I will continue to partner with you to make sure that you are successful in this role. Your success is our residents' success. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. We have Councilor One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like my colleagues and like what I said last year, which is, I think this evaluation form is not that great and could be improved, and I think it's a disservice to the city manager and to the city council. And I know that's not on you to fix the evaluation form. I think it's something we need to take the ownership of doing better as a council and as a city. So I just wanted to start there. And so first, I want to start with, in the last year since the last evaluation, 64% of my orders were responded to by the city manager. As I reflect on the last year, I really want to start off with my disappointment of last summer, when I was advocating for an ordinance regarding deceptive advertising of crisis pregnancy centers that prey on vulnerable folks that have led to critical health concerns for our residents and those who come to our city seeking abortion care and other medical reproductive services. I completely disagree with how this went down, with the city manager and the city solicitor not providing a draft ordinance despite it passing on the council. It disturbs me that the city solicitor, a staff of the manager, can outrightly share with a staff from the Attorney General that he had no intention of following through with a draft until it was discovered by a journalist. I challenge the administration to do better and not rely on Google to write a legal opinion and to not accept this level of work and this mediocrity. The public deserves way better and more effort than that. With that said, I do want to say I appreciate the ways in which we have the ability to continue to work despite conflict and it not influencing our ability to serve the public. There's been times when I respect the city manager for being able to be present with conflict and model a different way of reconciling that. When we found out that Recreation Worcester was short on funding for the summer and there was a citywide shortage of youth works cuts, the city manager did reallocate 1.5 million of ARPA funds to fill the gap. When the unhoused folks who planned an encampment demonstration in front of the RMV, Councilor Haji, the manager, and I spoke, and the city manager was already working towards increasing shelter beds, and also pushed for the shelter to be opened all the way to the end of this month instead of the shorter periods. And so I think these are the moments where I experienced the manager leading with his values and a clear route of decision-making for our community's benefit. I see your vision to better Worcester and your work with the departments and advocate for complete streets and taking the risk of improving Mill Street despite how many hours it took and how much work that took. And even in the rental registry, despite, I mean, and even in the rental registry, which I hope will set Worcester's housing stock to be more safe and in compliance for the decades to come and prevent the tragedies of fires, collapses, and preventable deaths, injury, and displacement. I have been collecting a survey from Worcester residents, and there are so many improvements that we desperately need in Worcester for it to have your focus, intentionality, and priority in the next few years. The biggest theme that I received was housing. People are being pushed out. The housing crisis is not new. Many wrote about not wanting housing developers that are not invested in the health of our city. We do not just need an increase in housing units, we need affordable and low-income units for our residents. Many also share the sentiment of taking care of our unhoused communities better by providing more resources and shelters with dignity. Unlike what many would say or believe, many in Worcester care about the unhoused and want to see a city that invests in them. I hope we start to reframe our outlook on economic development, that we are not just partaking in an extractive economy of our people, but one that builds safety nets, allows for the inclusion of everyone in our community, and strives for a livable, sustainable, present and future for our residents to benefit from the ways in which our city grows rather than isolating and displacing them. Another clear theme I saw was funding our schools. I know we get this every year during budget, and I know the explanation of us investing in building new schools and expanding the capital budget, but I think it's also important that our community are seeing such a drastic need for resources and funding for our schools. It's hard to overlook the constant advocacy for it. Every year since I've been here, there's been advocacy for it. I think that calls for our administration to do a deep investigation and a reflection of where we can shift our budget to meet the needs of our community. Folks have brought up the overspending and the inflated police budgets. I believe there's validity and truth to how we reallocate those fundings strategically that will still allow for public safety and for a really good chunk of it to go where our community envisions. For example, our last meeting on not expanding and renewing ShotSpotter and Resource Connect to youth programming. Internally, I would like to amplify and note, along with the community, that there is a need for hiring a chief equity officer. It's been so long with an empty position, especially with the racial equity audit of our HR, HHS, and Police Department, and so many other efforts that could have happened, but we wouldn't know because no one was there in these last few years. We need to have more streams of building with our BIPOC and communities on the margins, that the absence of this position is severely felt and drastically impacting us. I also think the ways in which we're seeing our city manager with moments of tension and conflicts with the Human Rights Commission and Cable Advisory Board shows me that we need better communication and holders of these spaces. The city manager needs to build out these spaces, a few spaces of structural and implemented democracy in our government. Our commissions and boards need our city manager to work alongside them. Too often, these spaces feel performative or not impactful. We need to do better in ensuring that these spaces serve their purpose and have the power to do their work, whether it is to look into the police department or to feel that their work actually matters and benefits the community. I push the manager to really do better in investing in these spaces and communicating, providing the documents, and building them out so they aren't the stereotypical image of a committee that doesn't move, that are disconnected, and are so filled with red tape that nothing gets done. In conclusion of my reflections, I think our city manager has been a manager for 1.5 years, and I would like to see him lean into the visions and investment for our communities. As I alluded to in the beginning, the moments in which his values feel clear are the moments I think we can give credit where it's due. A year and a half ago, Eric, you made history as the first Latino city manager in Worcester. I think making history because of being the first of an identity is one thing, but making history because of what you do with it is another. I would love to see you move into a real legacy of leadership and how you build out and invest in our communities during a time where the tide pushes people out and the economic growth happens at the expense of the people you serve. I hope to see you grow towards being bolder in your vision of inclusionary care and reclamation of democratic spaces so people who fought so hard for equity and justice can lead the solutions of Worcester. I wish you were bold enough to fight for people whose evictions are executed by outside constables, whose licenses are questionable. What would it look like to have a city manager who fought for that, who isn't scared to put a lawsuit out there for their people? What would it look like to have a city manager who was bold enough to say, yes, let's do a sanctuary encampment, because people deserve the right to housing, and if it will take years to have enough housing stock to meet those needs, this is what we will do temporarily for the sake of people's livelihood and dignity? I wish and hope for you to be bold in ways that would make Worcester an exemplary community that others can look towards and say, they were able to make that happen for their residents, so we can do it too. There's many ways for us to be just another city that follows the track of gentrification and our government to be a perpetrator of an extractive economy, and I hope you can shift that and do better with your time here. Thank you.
Next, we have Donna Coro.
Thank you. So let me start off by saying that I, too, dislike the format of this evaluation form and look forward to something different. So I've written mine primarily with the format in mind, but I found it was very difficult in, so, and I'm going to be very short and sweet. You won't even have me at the two-minute mark, okay? Time me now. So, well, this evaluation today is to provide feedback to the city manager as part of an ongoing process. This process includes this evaluation tonight, my monthly meetings with the city manager, and our continuous dialogue. These communications allow the city manager to understand the needs, goals, and priorities of the at-large communities I represent. We as councils depend on the city manager for reports, and the manager depends on us to make the best decisions it can after reviewing the facts. Given this relationship, the importance of respect between the council and the city manager relationship cannot be underestimated. It cannot be emphasized enough. Now that being said, I'll make these comments short and sweet. It's not a secret that the city is facing some challenges: homelessness, economic instability, housing shortages, substance abuse, quality of life, traffic issues, public safety, and infrastructure. So on the financial management, I have spoken at the budget sessions as to my concerns with elevated salaries and unresolved union contracts. Both items fit into the long-term financial planning. While I take a more conservative view on financial stability, I am concerned about the sustainability of certain departments if grants or state funding is lost, especially the building of new schools. Economic development, I am pleased to see the comprehensive five-year housing production plan with 42 new permanent supportive housing units, with 152 in the pipeline, also working on the expansion of affordable housing and market rate. Management inefficiencies, very pleased the city manager attends community meetings even when he has an opposing opinion. That's very important. He stands strong, and he wants to listen to the community. The city manager demonstrates a commitment to the democratic process by respecting the community and engaging in dialogue with various citizens' groups. Delivery of public service, public safety is one of the top concerns for the residents of Worcester. The city manager puts safety as a priority. As the Chair of Traffic and Parking, I hear continually about speeding and other traffic-related items. Looking forward to more solutions to address this problem. Good to see fatal overdoses decrease. Looking forward to a report over best practices. Good to see an increase of firefighters, five new apparatus, and eight new offices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Councilor Russell.
Mr. Chairman, I've heard the conversation in this council chamber many times about community, and I know we all have a little bit of a different view of community. My vision of community, Mr. Chairman, is it means all of us. It means those of us who moved here last week. It might mean people that are unhoused. It might mean people that need our assistance as a city. It also means those of us who played by the rules, who also grew up here, that have spent their life, work in the city of Worcester, investing in the city of Worcester, doing the right thing by our families and by our community, and working hard in that light. Mr. Chairman, through you, the manager, good luck, Mr. Manager, because you've got the toughest job in the building. The only one that might come close to you is Erica in the City Council office, because she's got 10 of us all pulling in different directions, and she doesn't have anywhere near the budget you have to try to address that. And I understand that. I understand that this is a very different council, and it's a good thing. That's why the public sent us here. They sent us here to represent various different factions of the community, and they also sent us here to represent the entire community, all of us and all of the city. Mr. Chairman, I know in my life growing up is, so many years ago, my degree, believe it or not, is in urban planning at Worcester State College. That's where my degree was in, not that I used it that much, but that was where my degree is. And, you know, when I look around and I see so many individuals in this room and in this city government that do their job so well, I would be here all night, Mr. Chairman, you'd be hitting the gavel many times, if I listed each and every one of them and the people that I come in contact with on a weekly basis, sometime on a daily basis, doing their job in their specific positions, you know? The 3-1-1 group, the office, has been so much improved in this last year. The Quality of Life Team, I think, is out there saving lives every day by the work that they do and making our entire community better. Recreation Worcester and all of the folks in the Health Department are doing what they should be doing and... should be doing and what we look to them to for leadership in their efforts on a regular basis. My confidence is there in the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Public Works Staff, and the Inspection Services Staff. You know, I've had a few energetic council meetings in the last few months about inspectional service issues, but I'll tell you, I've never challenged the staff at the Inspection Services. They are top-notch, they are professional, and they look and do their job well, and they protect the citizens of this city every day that they're out there, and they save lives every time that they're out there. And it's something I've said every time I've reviewed a city manager on this council floor, and I'll continue to say that. The Law Department is, I might not agree with them all the time either, but they always respond well and try to make me understand what we can do legally and otherwise. Mr. Chairman, the Treasurer's Office and Mr. McGurthy and his team, I can't, I mean, I don't know how he keeps track of everything. I can call Tim McGurthy and say, this item is here, and he'll bang it right out. He'll know exactly where every penny is and what drawer it is. And I can't overestimate or overstate how great that organization is. Do I agree with the budget that's put out every year? Of course I don't. But the mechanics, the staff behind that budget office is outstanding. Mr. Chairman, they do their job, and the manager does his job, and we all do our jobs. I know I do my job. The reason why I'm standing in this council chamber, Mr. Chairman, is because the people of District 3 sent me here. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there are some communication issues. It's hard to believe, Mr. Chairman, through you, the manager, that I would be the person that was talking about your Public Relations Office and saying, there's not quite as much public relations as we should be having. But there's been a communication level issues as far as I'm concerned. Mr. Chairman, when the kids at Lou Gehrig Little League go into their fieldhouse, they go up to a door into their snack shack, it's a plate, a metal plate. It's a metal plate, a plate that we use at the Public Works Department to put over a pothole on the street. That was supposed to be corrected, and that money that was put in that was supposed to be corrected in that, was supposed to be a redo of that fieldhouse with opera money that this previous city manager promised, that this city manager worked with and promised that we all had hoped would be on. Mr. Chairman, you and I stood at that ballfield and talked to the parents and folks and talking about all those kinds of improvements where that shack got broken into. And, Mr. Chairman, it took me asking questions to find out, of course, it was buried somewhere in a communication that that money was reallocated, and it was, part of it was even reallocated in District 3, in Mulcahy Field. But it took me digging to find out that that money was spent elsewhere. Mr. Chairman, and meanwhile, the kids at that field still are looking for those repairs. Now, the manager has said to me, we'll take care of it, it'll be taken care with the capital budget. It's not in the capital budget now. I haven't seen any activity there. And that's just one example of the daily items, and this doesn't reflect on the Quality of Life Team, but the daily quality of life issues that face the residents of District 3 on a daily basis. Mr. Chairman, you know, on Sunderland Road, there was an item that came before this council that was passed by this council to have sidewalks along Sunderland Road. Mr. Manager and his team graciously and wonderfully, in fact, allocated a million dollars of opera money to redo the Roosevelt School Park lot. But the school department is saying, well, the sidewalks are not included. Some of the sidewalks are included, but not all the sidewalks included. There should have been shovels in the ground on that for the rest of it from the DPW longer ago. That was not in the budget. Mr. Chairman, if you drive through Grafted Hill, you drive through Vernon Hill, you drive through the side streets, the streets are in poor condition. I'm not giving anyone any breaking news, but the streets are in poor condition. And part of the reason why they're in poor condition, Mr. Chairman, is because when I came to this council chamber 12 years ago, or almost 12 years ago now, we had the same amount of money budgeted each year for district councillors to choose on the streets or the side streets. It's the same amount we're using today, the same amount. When the district councillors get to choose which side streets are done, we have the same number before us each time coming forward. That's not acceptable, Mr. Chairman. It's a big issue. Mr. Chairman, we've got a serious litter issue that I've talked about many times on this council floor. Is it a litter issue on Main Street or even in my neighborhood where I live? No, it's not. But it is a big issue in the urban neighborhoods, and it needs to be addressed. And I know that there has been efforts made, great efforts by the Clean Team and by Quality of Life and trying to work away at it, but we need some kind of a different plan that addresses litter in our urban neighborhoods. And I'm above me, it's above my pay grade to come up with that, but for me not to stand here and to say everything's fine when it comes with dealing with litter in our urban neighborhoods, I would be lying to the public, and I'm not about to do that. Mr. Chairman, you heard tonight at the microphone, there was a person that got up and spoke about the private streets. For years and years and years, from when I was on the planning board, this city government told the people of private streets that we don't have any authority, we have no willingness to do anything at all on private streets. Then, lo and behold, about maybe six months or a year ago, a memo surfaced, in fact, there was an audience in place that allowed money to be used by the city to do some work, up to $6 a footer. $6 a footers are going to get you much, but it might get you a little something. But we had a gentleman at the microphone tonight that talked about that because it wasn't in the budget. When I ask Commissioner Fink, is there money there? There is no such appropriation. Mr. Chairman, I hate to be the, you know, the bad person at the party, or the skunk, I think it's Councilor Bergman always says, the skunk at the parade or whatever, but the block party, excuse me. But the bottom line is, is that I don't think that I'd be doing my job if I didn't mention these things on behalf of the residents in my district. Mr. Chairman, I really believe that it comes down not only on the shoulder of the manager, it comes down to the shoulder of all of us as a city council, and it comes down to us as a city government in general. And I think, and I really do believe this, that we should do everything we can to try and look at a home rule petition, to try and change the charter of the city of Worcester. I know you're going to say, Russell wants a strong mayor, and he's going to say that again, but that's not what I'm talking about. Today, what I'm talking about is we need to make a change in this charter. We need to make a change in this charter that allows this city council to be a strong city council, because there's no reason why we spend meeting after meeting, marathon meeting after marathon meeting, on a process where we don't have the authority to change anything. We don't have the authority as a city council to change anything on the budget. We can make recommendations, we can make suggestions, but we don't have the authority, as other city governments do, to say, this line is not right, and we want to move it over to this department. That's something that this city council should have serious thought about and talk about going forward. Mr. Chairman, it's up to us. Every year when we do the review of the manager, I always say, I look at, and I look at my year too, and I look at it as a review of myself as a district council. And that's why sometimes in my reports that I keep putting out the same thing, saying, I've been advocating for this and I've been advocating for that. You know, we still have some of these issues that need to be addressed, and it's part of my responsibility, at least as a district councillor, to bring those things to the attention of the manager, looking forward in a positive level. You know, Mr. Chairman, I was the first councillor on this floor to ask for a two-year contract for the city manager, the first councillor. Believe me, I caught a lot of negative on that, and, you know, and I also caught a lot of positive on it because of some of the good things that this manager has done. And I think that we could all roll up our sleeves. I know I'm willing to do it, to roll up my sleeves and to work further with this administration and with this manager going forward, but I think there's some issues, especially the issues that affect on a local level in my district, in District 3, the district that I'm proud to represent. It's not my district, it's a people's district. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring them to your attention. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is Councilor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, while you've served as a manager for a year and a half, you've completed your first full year in your position, and you've represented solid visions and goals, objectives and plans with the understanding that there must be benchmarks to be met. You also know that plans can't be so rigid that when a challenge is faced, that you have the ability to stop and pivot in the direction needed. You've learned that sometimes you need to stop and review a process with the intent of making it better. The future is fluid. Each decision that is made creates new opportunities or exposes a roadblock. The key to managing it, again, is to learn how to pivot and find new opportunities, which I think you're doing. Your recognition that Worcester is growing and changing, and so are our needs, is critical to the planning process. You are data-driven. That data has shown positives and negatives, and you've recognized the challenges facing our city with housing and inflation, substance use disorder, chronic and acute homelessness, gun violence, and aging housing stock, and the high cost of living and issues with traffic. Your focus on diversity and inclusion has made great strides, and our city family is more reflective of that diversity. We must embrace the future, our new Worcesterites, and also all who have been here for generations. Balance is key. Remembering our history, our foundation as we grow, our neighborhoods, that we ensure that everyone has a seat at the table equitably. It is imperative that we move forward with contracts for all of our departments, and all should work collaboratively in a timely manner to commit to shorten negotiation times in the future. It is also important that all our employees, whether executives, mid-management, clerical laborers, and all in between, know that there's a path to grow in their careers, that they are appreciated for the hard work as public servants they perform every day. I appreciate the initiatives that you have established and hope that we will continue to ensure that every employee is compensated commensurate to their industry standard to ensure that they can make a living to support their families and are able to live here in Worcester. With the cost of living and housing increasing, especially impacting our lower-wage earners, outside-box solutions are needed, and I know you've started that step. The positives are important, especially with our financial stability. Growth in our business development and entertainment, dining, and creative economy, budgeting and fiscal management inclusive of economic development all play a role in our future stability. All those departments are working extremely well together. I would be remiss not to include again a request that economic development also includes the Route 20 corridor. Its location alone, close to the Mass Pike, 140, 146, Route 9, Route 20, make it extremely desirable for future business. As part of the Route 20 development, maybe we look to cite a new East Middle on Route 20 when we have room in the budget. The draft five-year strategic plan outlines a solid infrastructure for future growth, inclusive of our next goal for our schools is a new sorely needed burn code. For me, focusing on addressing the needs of our youth assists in providing healthier environments to deter them from getting involved in undesirable activities, ensuring an opportunity for growth and success for them in our city. That will take an all-hands-on-deck approach and understanding that there isn't one solution. Our public safety is paramount to ensure equality of life for all, and I'm grateful for the efforts to break down barriers and be inclusive of the community by all of our departments. And while we've had surveys, I'm grateful for the community approach, getting into our neighborhoods on a first-person basis. I appreciate your support to enhance our police department's toolbox by supporting the chief's crime-gun intelligence unit, ShotSpotter, updated safety equipment, summer impact, and establishing a youth agenda. Thank you for supporting continued classes in police and fire academies, and I hope that there'll be effort to focus on support and retention of all of our public safety department personnel, a focus on new apparatus, improvements to infrastructure, and continued investment in safety equipment. I'm very grateful that this past year you were able to help us purchase five new fire apparatus for the Fire Department, which was almost unheard of, and it's through proper planning and future vision that you've been able to do that. To that end, I'd like to see efforts to ensure that the South Division is built as soon as possible, especially recognizing the growth of population in the area, and that we, at the very least, continue to upgrade conditions at the Police Department and put together a long-term plan for replacement. I also ask that you continue to support interdepartmental crisis training, not only for physical disasters, but cyber disasters as well. With all that's going on in the world, we must be prepared for potential disruption to our daily lives. It is through continued training and exercise that we'll be able to meet any disaster with a solid approach. While there have been several initiatives started in various departments, the delay of implementation due to delays in actual rollout of software, a key element in ensuring project success, or rolling out without software in place has triggered a, let's get our ducks in the row, state of mind. It's imperative that all departments that will be impacted by the projects be part of planning before rollout. As I said, you've learned to pivot and do it well. The Quality of Life Team continues to do yeoman's work, and Worcester 3-1-1, despite a few hiccups, has been a great tool. Parks and Recreation improvements, Public Works Infrastructure improvements, and Batuminous Management are most welcome. There is much more I could say, but, Mr. Manager, overall, I believe that you have a personal and professional integrity, and I'm pleased to have been part of the council who hired you and believe that you are meeting your expectations. I look forward to voting on your contract, and I look forward to great things to come. I want to thank you and all of your city departments, I know I didn't mention them all, for the incredible work that they've done this year, and I know there's some unsung heroes, but I want every employee to know how much they are appreciated. We are all Worcester. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pacino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start by thanking the entire administration for being welcoming and helpful throughout my first six months as the District One councillor. I tend to ask a lot of questions, and every single person in City Hall has been patient and always takes the time to help with any issues. Thanks to Commissioner Fink, I now understand the different ways to treat potholes and the challenges of private roads. Mr. McGurthy has literally spent hours of his time helping me navigate the budget. I've essentially taken a college-level course on municipal budgeting this spring. I understand how busy everyone is, and I truly appreciate everyone who has taken time out of their day to help me settle into this role. Transparency, communication, and constituent services are my constant goals and motivation, which is something I have discussed with the city manager. My focus is making sure the residents of District One are heard, receive the services they need and deserve, and are strongly represented. I meet with the city manager once a month. I bring a list of my long-term projects as well as current issues and discuss what my plans are for the next month. City manager always has updates for me. He and his staff follow up with me in between meetings, and both the city manager and his chief of staff, Amy Peterson, always make themselves available when I reach out. Financial management is a priority with the administration, and the Financial Integrity Plan does a great job of laying out the city's goals. As we work towards a new burn code, it's important that we don't put the burden on taxpayers, and it's vital to plan ahead, which is addressed. The city also contributed 7.8 million into the Worcester Public Schools' new high school fund this year. I'm very happy with the school capital maintenance fund and the 1% employee contribution to the OPEB Trust Fund for new city employees. Planning for the future is crucial to ensure sustainable growth and appropriate allocations for resources like infrastructure, public services, and economic development. Being on the first all-female Economic Development Committee has been a focus over the past month. Peter Dunn and the Economic Development Office are dedicated to fostering our local economy by supporting business growth, attracting new investments, and promoting workforce development. The WBDC redevelopment project at St. Gobain will bring jobs to District One and rejuvenate the Greendale neighborhood. The administration's support for the Curtis redevelopment project at Great Brook Valley will create 527 units that are modern and give residents the quality of life they deserve. I'd like to thank Peter Dunn for helping me better understand the intricacies of zoning, and I'm looking forward to the growth and development in the Now Next strategic framework that will guide us over the next decade. I've found the interdepartmental and intergovernmental coordination to meet expectations. The Burn Coat Street resurfacing project is underway. We're getting new sidewalks, safer crosswalks, and infrastructure improvements. This has had a massive impact on the neighborhood. I've had numerous meetings with Steve Rowley and Todd Corain from the Transportation Mobility Department, Assistant Commissioner of Water and Sewer, Sean Dival, and Assistant Commissioner of Engineering, Rick Saltre, and of course, Commissioner Fink. They all attended a neighborhood They all attended a neighborhood meeting before the project started and presented their plan clearly to residents. Mr. Corain and Mr. Rowley shared their PowerPoint with me, which I have shared with a lot of residents throughout the neighborhood and is very appreciated. Mr. Rowley and Mr. Corain are also working with DPW to construct a sidewalk around the trees by the Quinsigman Field, which is extremely important to residents in the neighborhood. DPW and Transportation Mobility have also met with the Hammond Heights neighborhood multiple times as well. Over the past six months, the council has worked with the administration, including the Department of Emergency Communication and Management, to improve the 311 app. I felt Director Charles Goodwin and his staff took our feedback seriously, and I have seen improvements in their communication with residents. I work closely with the Director of 311, Laura Cosenza. She is diligent, knowledgeable, and has helped me with resident issues from broken streetlights to problem properties. I also think it's important to highlight recognitions, such as Commissioner Fink being named one of the top 10 Public Works Leaders of the Year, which is a national award, and Jennifer Fair from Public Works being the first woman to win the Paul J. Musi Employee Award. There are challenges that I look forward to working on together with the city manager and his administration throughout the district, such as improved streets and sidewalks, making our roads safe for everyone as laid out in Vision Zero, housing, food insecurity, litter, and accessible communication between City Hall and the residents in District One. Improving the quality of life in the Northern Lincoln Street neighborhood is one of my top priorities, and Chief Saucier and Lieutenant Murtha have been helpful and engaged. We meet every month or so to connect and discuss the district, and I am grateful for their expertise and insights. The WPD started their summer impact program three weeks early to help engage with the community in a meaningful way. They attend neighborhood meetings, joined in the mayor's walk this month to speak to residents and businesses, and they are always respectful, attentive, and kind. The Quality of Life team and I have also spent time working to improve the Northern Lincoln Street neighborhood. Dan Cahill and the Quality of Life team have gone above and beyond. Joe Simone even organized a cleanup at the Denny's property, and they have been working hard to keep that area clean and working on strategies for litter. Lee Hall and David Horn have opened up their offices on Mead Street. They facilitated ride-alongs with inspectors and taken the time to respond to my requests and helped me understand their complex roles in our city. As Chair of Parks Committee, Assistant Commissioner Antonelli has been responsive and informative. I'm looking forward to the Tacoma Street Playground Project, which started construction this spring. This project will bring a dog park, splash pad, and playground to the neighborhood. Indian Hill Park renovations will be complete next month and include improvements to the playground, lighting, and walking paths. I'm also happy the administration added an additional staff person to the Veteran Services Department and look forward to better supporting Dr. Robinson in his role as director. I do feel there is work to be done when it comes to communication between City Hall and residents. The rollout of the rental registry was confusing, and while I know it was done with the best of intentions, we need to do a better job of keeping residents informed and in the loop. Policy changes should not come as a surprise, and we need to do our due diligence in making sure we are meeting people where they're at and sharing information in a meaningful way. Over the past six months as the District One Counselor, I have felt supported, and I appreciate the city manager and his administration's data-driven approach to governing. I could not do my job as a district counselor if it wasn't for the people in the administration who work tirelessly to assist us daily. Going forward, my expectations are to continue pushing transparent, accessible policies that are based on data and allow for community input. There is always more work to be accomplished, and we can always push ourselves to do better. I am confident that by working together in an open, transparent way, we can continue to move the city in an inclusive, efficient, and sustainable direction. Thank you.
Councilor Hohira?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, there's been a lot, right? And it's very interesting to me, as I sit here, because this evaluation process, obviously everybody has mixed feelings about it, and, you know, understanding how things work as I learn along the way. I think the most important thing for me is, prior to city council, I really want to stress that, as a resident, right, as someone just loves the city, loves, you know, just being here, being involved, being able to reach out to the city manager, and being able to know that I had his support, but it wasn't just for me. Before city council, this is, and it's always been, it's never for me, it's for the residents. And to be able to reach out to the city manager and know that I can reach out to him to support our residents, or just support issues that we had, such as like neighborhood issues with needles and violence programs that I've run for over 20 years, and just know that the steps you took, right, to get to where you are, and knowing that, you know, it wasn't easy, and seeing the process. And to be honest with you, to sit there through an evaluation like this, no disrespect, but it's like, I can't remember the word I was thinking about, but it's just taking it all on at once, right? And I appreciate that, you know? And I apologize, I know I'm all over the place, because I didn't have anything written down, because quite frankly, I didn't realize we needed to do that, to be honest with you. And no disrespect, I'm an honest person, but I think for me, as a city council now, and having those meetings with you and understanding that I can reach out to your administration, reach out to the staff, and I thank you wholeheartedly, 100%, that I'm able to reach out, like Council Pacillo said, to be able to reach out to you and get that support right away, right, where we're just, we're not waiting. In many areas, in working with the Quality of Life team, where, you know, Dan and I have, you know, gone through a lot already, and it's crazy, because I've only been here, been in for six months, and it feels like it's been over a year, and understand that the commitment, not just Dan, but the rest of the staff, to their jobs, but they understand that their commitment is to the city managers, to all of us, but most important, to the residents of our city. And I think that just comes with strong leadership. And with leadership comes communication, right? And I think that communication is sent along through his staff, all of the issues and concerns that we have for our residents. And yes, sometimes communication doesn't, you know, get transferred over properly, and that's what it is, but the city manager, I love the fact that he accepts that, right? You know, we dealt with Mill Street, we're dealing with Mill Street. He's accepted that, right? He's accepted and met with residents face-to-face and took ownership on that and says, you know, we went the wrong direction, you know, we want to hear from the residents going forward. So I can, I appreciate that. But I promise I'll keep it brief. But on a more personal level, I think most importantly for me, as a Latino male, to see you up there, right, representing the Latino community, it's amazing. It's a Latino leader who's leading our, helping lead our city, who takes on the challenges, but at the same time listens and understands what the concerns and needs are. You know, that's important to me, as a Latino growing up, to be able to see you up there. And it means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to my father, and I appreciate that. So, as a Latino, I stand proud, and even prouder to be able to work together and work with you to make sure that our city is better, not just for the Latino community, but for all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Marrow-Coxon?
Yes, Mr. We've been through these evaluations using this same crazy form for a very long time, and I'm sure we'll complain about it for the next however long we're here. For me, Mr. Manager, as you know, it's all about those who I represent and in my district. And it's hard to believe that you've been here now for a year and a half, and certainly have had your plate pretty full. I know I, for one, have brought you many challenges, but you've stood the task in every one of them, and I want to say how much I do appreciate that. I think that for us as a council, and for those of us who serve the residents of the city of Worcester, there's often times that we don't know what your day looks like from each and every one of us. I can say unequivocally, for the challenges in my district, you've always been there. In saying that, you chose to appoint the interim chief, Paul Saucia. And for me, and you making those decisions and choosing someone like Paul Saucia as the interim chief, and as I hope for him to be the chief, and the reason for that is, is obviously the qualities that you've seen when you made that decision to put him as acting chief. And I, for one, as someone in the district, and our issues in the Northern Lincoln Street that Councilor Pacillo now has been handed, as you know, for years, that was my district, and we certainly had challenges, and there's many folks in this room who have no idea about those challenges because they were never there. And maybe they didn't need to be there. But you've been there every step of the way. You're there every step of the way at this point that Jenny's there. The lower end of Lincoln Street, as you well know, we still have our challenges, and you've been there. So those are the things that I look at as a council, and I look at what are we doing about it, and the response from our Worcester Police Department and the chief, and how much I appreciate that there was an action step that was taken, and it was taken immediately. Mr. City Manager, there's also on a day-to-day basis, you know, it's the RMV. I appreciate what you've done and how that has been rolled out and how we've worked together on that RMV. There isn't one of us who decided we needed any fanfare over that. We knew how important it was to make sure that we were taking care of the people who needed to be taken care of, and I certainly, again, appreciate that. When I look at your administration and look at the Parks Department, there is, you know, certainly nobody who has as many challenges on a daily basis than Rob Antonelli dealing with the Parks Department. And the reason I say these different departments is because that's who we deal with every day. When we get up in the morning and the phone rings, it's usually these departments. There's many other departments that are in this room tonight that, yes, there's a lot of important work that they do on your behalf, and you lead with a team that you have here tonight in the room. You know, and I say the Parks Department because the Parks Department, as you know, Mr. Manager, you know, nine years ago when I was elected, there was very little money that was spent in the parks, and nobody could really use these parks because there was nothing there for them to really go to, because we didn't fully support them in any manner. Today, we do, and we should be extremely proud about what we do. When we look at our Economic Development Department, we have a department that honestly, all you have to do is read the newspaper, look at any of the statistics, and it'll show you how much people want to come to Worcester and how much more we need to build. One of the things that certainly this city council has been always trying to work on, and we haven't found the magic solution as of yet, and that's housing. But, Mr. Manager, you have stepped up and put whatever you could into housing for us as a council and as a city. There's a couple of departments that you have sort of shifted, and we've certainly had challenges. Those departments, we've had challenges, and I believe that those challenges were because of lack of communication. And I think that, I say that with, it's not, I know it's not intentionally, but there are some departments that we certainly need better communication. We need better communication when we talk about that with all of the road infrastructure that's being done and residents not knowing that that's being done. And on a daily basis, wherever that construction is taking place, and people are all jammed up in traffic jams, or people's water is shut off, and I know that we try to do the best we can, but I believe that those are some of the challenges that we need to work on. How can we do better for those who we represent? And, Mr. Manager, as you know from being on Lincoln Street, and you had to be the interpreter for those who I represent up there, people want to be engaged in this city, they want to know what's happening in this city, and they want to feel safe in this city. One of your best attributes is you being there with people. And I know it's extremely difficult for you to be out there every night, but, you know, the people in this city want you to be places, or they want this administration to be place, you know, where they're at. Mr. Manager, you had also, during your tenure, have elevated Mr. Dan Cahill, and there is nobody, nobody, that, quite honestly, in this city, that gets, I believe, more phone calls and deals with more issues in this city. But I just need to tell you that that's an incredible choice that you chose, and that the work gets done, and nobody is waiting for the work to get done. The work gets done. Again, there's many other departments that are here that do the good work of the city, and as I always say, for the people in DPW, those are the folks who oftentimes know, they don't get, you know, all of the spotlight, but again, they are the people who do the work for us each and every day. Are there things that we need to do differently? I believe that there is, and I believe we can work through some of those challenges that we have, and the same in transportation and mobility. I think that the new transportation and mobility is great for this city, but again, I think that there's work that needs to be done for us as counselors with some of these departments. So, Mr. Manager, a year and a half ago, I was somebody who stood here and advocated for you. I still stand here and advocate for you for all that you do for this city, but we do need to find a way to connect more with the residents of this city, because that is what they're asking for, and that is one of the things that I've heard over, you know, the last year and a half, is that people are looking for more communication. But again, I stand here tonight, supporting you as I did a year and a half ago, and I wish you nothing but success in whatever, you know, whether this is for the next 10 years. I mean, most city managers, if you can stay here for 10 years, but that tends to be sometimes the number, but again, look forward to facing some of the challenges and certainly the successes that we have, but certainly want to say to you how much I appreciate when I call that you're always there. But in closing, I do want to say the other challenge that we have, and I've said this to the previous administration, and I'll certainly say it to you. What doesn't sit well is when we have contracts that are four years out. Regardless of what department that is, I think that we can do better, and I hope that going forward, we certainly do better, because for those of us who are from the organized labor world, that's a, you know, real no-no in our world, because I believe that, you know, we can come to terms with any one of the bargaining units that we have here in the city. So I look forward to hearing the good news that we've come to an agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Council King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wants to begin by just pointing out for folks who are talking about Wants to begin by just pointing out for folks who are talking about our process and our rubric and our evaluation tool, Mr. Chairman. Going back to April of 2021, Mr. Chairman, three years ago, I filed an order that was unanimously supported. City manager worked with the Director of Human Resources. And I'm going to preface my statements by saying for the public, the city council is required to hire and evaluate and negotiate contract with the auditor, city manager, and the city clerk. That's our responsibility. It's part of the reason why we're here today. And I do not apologize for this format. It comes with the territory. City manager Batista's been with the city for well over a decade. And with that comes expectations, compensation, and the privilege of leading at an executive level in public service. That being said, going back 2021 regarding one of the three that we hired, the city clerk, I had filed an order unanimously supported. City manager worked with the Director of Human Resources to develop an annual performance review for the city clerk, Mr. Chairman. That has not manifested. And I question to the chair to the administration, has that work been completed and when can we expect it, through the chair?
Let's ask one question. We're not going to go question.
I can ask whatever I want, Mr. Chairman. This isn't, there's no rules that prevent that. I'm going to ask the question. Thank you.
Yeah, well, it's ridiculous. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
To the chair, to the council, I know there's been a lot of discussions on the floor and I, my understanding is that there's been a lot of times with items that have been filed and, and so the action of delivering an item that folks have filed has not occurred.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I'm looking forward to that occurring. It's necessary for this process. In addition, in February, filed an order that was unanimously supported to add the auditor to the request for a referential advisory tool. We know that these tools, this outline here, we are not required to follow that format, but for referential purposes and discussion at the time and the spirit was that we'd look at other municipalities and whatnot and come back with a product, Mr. Chairman. I know that currently, my other order is sitting currently in municipal operations, asking for technical assistance from HR to be provided to the council to establish a rubric and an evaluation tool for the annual, for the annual performance review for referential purposes of the city manager, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to preface my comments by saying that. And I'm hoping that we're able to do something different as we move forward if folks so choose. That being said, I wanted to talk a little bit about our city manager as I see him. And I see him as a husband, a father, and then a city manager, Mr. Chairman, a family man of values. And, you know, a man who has deep-seated Worcester roots, Mr. Chairman, like many of us here on this council. And that's important. You know, every election, I have the honor to say and privileges that I'm part of the, one of the most diverse city councils in the history of Worcester and that hasn't changed. When I look around today, you know, I count about 11 firsts between the three folks here and the folks sitting here. I think we have about 11 firsts. And, you know, some folks may be like, what is he talking about? But there's 11 firsts sitting around as elected officials, as appointees. And I know what it's like to be a first. And there's a tremendous pride. Representative government includes appointees. It includes employees and it includes policy and budget that's also related to that. You know, I know there's a number of departments that we have. I don't know, on the website, there's tons. I don't know if there's 40, 30, 50, however, it's broken up. You know, it's 50 there, but they might be, you know, detached and combined, I don't know. But what I wanted to say is that I wanted to acknowledge that you took initiative with regards to reorganizing city government and public service provision. Now, I have taken issue with some of that, quite frankly, and asked for you to be flexible and nimble as relates to decommissioning some of the commissions on diversity and inclusion and combining that with Human Rights Commission. You know, and I think we did some reorganization with other departments and positions and elevating other positions to cabinet. And that takes forward thinking. And I think that the fruits of that labor, that intellectual labor and that structural labor will manifest and I'm hoping that we can be flexible as we move forward. I want to mention the strategic plan that you've embarked upon. You know, a lot of folks referenced here about supporting you as city manager from day one. I supported the process from day one. And part of that process would have informed your strategic plan, Mr. Chairman. And part of that process was culling a whole list of folks, community members, city councilors, et cetera, in the process of hiring a city manager. And you would have had all of that base of information, not simply based on some of the engagement, but targeted, targeted work by professionals to bring that information to us and to the city for evaluative purposes. Mr. Chairman, a number of things that we are doing well. You know, we look at our budget. Again, nothing's perfect. There's some places I think that we've been, we could have had some cost savings, right? Shot spotted. You think about Scupper, Massachusetts. You think about some of the monies that we had initially targeted for insurance, $8.6 million or so over there at the DCU Center. And the one thing I know, Mr. Chairman, is that the integrity and honesty of our city manager is something that I've never questioned. On the council floor, he may be doing a dance. There may be times where I don't like his answers or I don't think he's answering. And if I want to push, I will. And if I don't, I'll discuss it in public. But in terms of integrity, that's not something that I question. You know, going back to commissions, I'd like to see some improvement there. We've had a number of commissions, Human Rights Commission, Diversity and Inclusion Commission. We've had, you know, the issues with cable advisory and the like that I think could have been handled better and more deftly. But there's room to grow, Mr. Chairman. I've said repeatedly on this council floor that I think that this manager was dealt a very poor hand by his predecessors, by his predecessor, despite, you know, folks not understanding what was under the hood of the car, per se. I think with that, you have risen to many challenges. You know, I also, you know, appreciate some of the work regarding housing, some of the work regarding our sheltered. However, we got to do better with following, following our own policies on taking down encampments and being less reactionary. We also need to continue to develop a plan for the interim. And I certainly appreciate phone calls and things of the likes and Lieutenant Governor of the governor and getting shelters here, but there's always work to do. You know, again, with regards to the efficacy of department heads and departments, Mr. Chairman, we know that at the end of the day, the buck stops here, literally and figuratively. And the performance of your departments, I don't expect to be perfect. What I do expect is corrective actions when rollouts are extremely poor, when implementation of policy or design is poor. I expect quick and effective corrective actions that can save lives and it can also ensure public trust. And I think for the most part, we've experienced that, but when there have been a couple of occasions where we had to do better and we have not. And, you know, staffing analyses of our departments. We need to make sure that the council has an idea of what we need. You know, I think there's that wish list that we never really have an idea about, but I think it might be helpful for us in the future to have an understanding of optimum service provision because that's what it's about, public service, and what we can do. Because the one thing I also know, and this was prior to your appointment as acting, post-appointment as acting, and post-appointment as city manager, that in our conversations, you were always clear that we were spending in a way that was unsustainable. And I'll give you credit for taking a look at the budget and trying to develop with the chief financial officer and his staff, other ways because we're going to have some challenges coming up with regards to, you know, funding Burnco and perhaps East Middle and Burnco Middle and things of that nature. And I think what we need as a council is upfront, projective analyses of where we're going to be looking. I know that you've worked with a number of community groups, Black Families Together and others, and we even recently met today regarding wealth gaps and inequalities. Had the opportunity to work with a number of your departments here on a number of issues. They've, for the most part, the majority have been responsive and productive. I think we had a real shortcoming over there and we had a department head leave us expeditiously, two department heads leave expeditiously during your tenure. And I think that we've moved forward as a city after that had occurred. Mr. Chairman, with regards to youth initiatives and things of that nature, I also commend responding to my orders and this council's orders to seek ways to ensure a level of funding for youth initiatives. I also know that it's not where it was, but where we have to be. What has not yet occurred, and I'll be pushing for this moving forward, Mr. Chairman, is that what we need to begin to do is incorporate as part of our budget, as part of our fiscal values, funding for our youth for prevention purposes and for repurposes of responding to trauma saturation. We can repeatedly hear about young folks in the community and their families and friends and folks who are just reading it or are being triggered. That stuff sits and settles in the community. And part of it isn't simply, you know, our money's going to run out. Airmarks are great, but we need to begin to embed that funding to an advanced degree in our actual budget, Mr. Chairman. Delivery of public services, you know, I think that there's areas that need improvement and there's areas to growth. And there's also, you know, responsiveness from all of our departments. Public Safety Inspection Services, we can go down the list, Economic Development, HHS, HR, whatever, Education, Library. All of those folks have the best interests of our city. And we may have disagreements about how to get there, but there's certainly, you know, a consistent, conscious passion for the city and that's a reflection of the city manager, Mr. Chairman. You know, I make no qualms about my governing style. It's one of being critically analytic. And, you know, I appreciate the city manager's openness to that. I no longer have to tiptoe around issues concerned about oversensitivity and the like. It's a business arrangement as it should be, Mr. Chairman. I will also say that with regards to our staffing analysis that I've called for, I've also asked for formalized pay equity analysis. You know, I'm proud to have led the charge to bring our three equity audits here. To be quite frank, the fact that we've not had a diversity officer or a chief equity officer, or however we want to call it, since April or May of 2022 is a significant gap that needs to be filled. Now, I want to make it clear to the public, it's not that it's, that position is not filled due to a lack of effort. However, I think that reorganization has put additional duties on that particular position. I think that the past administration and this administration and this council, Mayor Petty, have all been flexible about compensation for that position to make sure it's equitable and desirable. But, you know, there's many lengths that we have to take to become the model employer that we want to, we want to be. You know, with regards to our economic development work, you know, we have a department, I think, that intersects, all of our departments intersect. And what we're looking to see as we move forward is the technology that makes that easier because when they're able to, easier to intersect and communicate than folks that are doing business with the city and we're doing business for the city and the residents and the people that come through here are able to navigate most effectively, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just want to close with some of the concerns and things I look forward to. We have a Department of Justice inquiry going on. I'm not sure where that'll land. I'm not sure if it'll land. But whatever comes out with that, I have confidence that you'll bring that immediately to the department, I mean, to the department, to the city council, work mode, to the city council. I don't want to wait, similar to an equity audit, we're waiting months to actually for it to come to council, to come to council right away and so that we can have that discussion. And, you know, it's the gap that we have without having a diversity, equity, or inclusion officer and staff is significant. One of the concerns I did have regarding the budget piece that I asked in various budgeting sessions to departments, how much money is allotted to realize, enact, or achieve the numerous recommendations so that we can become a model employer? And I think we fell short there. I think that your staff, your administration, you have the respect of those folks, but I do think that your, your strengths as a people person, a Worcester person, is significant. Your credentials are unquestioned, but there is a list of improvements that we can do better on. And I pledge to continue to ask you to do that on the council floor in our private meetings. And I'm sure you'll push me to do better myself in your way, Mr. Chairman. You know, again, my overall assessment is that there's area for growth. You know, I think this is our second evaluation of you, second? You know, and it's very interesting because there's times where, you know, with regards to what folks call progressive issues, I felt you haven't gone far enough. Sometimes I think that perhaps I'm in a different place with some of the other things. But I think that your commitment to Worcester is real. I think your commitment is genuine. And I'm looking forward to having a business relationship where we get the best for Worcester, Mr. Chairman. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
I don't want to take up too much time because I know the cabinet and my staff has been here since five o'clock and many of you are probably hungry, thirsty and I want to leave right after this. And you guys can, you guys can leave after. But I want to, I want to thank the council again for the confidence that you've had in me to, to lead the city and work with you and be partners to achieve, to achieve the impossible because doing this work is extremely hard for all of us, right? And so I want to thank all of you for that. And thank you for your words today, not only for the positive, but also for the critique. That's part of the evaluation process. We get to understand, we get to learn. And then the staff gets to hear too, just so that they understand and they know, okay, what do I need to tweak? How do we come back to the table and how do we improve? And that's what makes us better as individuals, but also as people who lead and work in this city. Because serving the public and being a public servant is about people. It's not about, you know, you can get caught up in the red tape and the bureaucracies and the business practices, but at the end of the day, it's about the business practices, but at the end of the day, it's about serving people. And so, if we continue to work on making sure that our people are at the center of our discussions and people are at the center of our compassion, our love, our empathy, then we're going to achieve a lot of great things together and as leadership here in this municipality. But I can't go on without thanking the cabinet. We actually have 16 cabinet members, 16 departments, and a whole bunch of divisions. Many of them are here. Many of them are here, according to Councilor King, there's 50 of you. I'd go crazy if there was 50 cabinet members. But many of you are here. And yes, I am the city manager. We have two over 2,000 employees, and all those employees make decisions every single day. But at the end of the day, I'm responsible for all of them, even though I didn't make them. But that's why it's so important to have people like the cabinet members and my staff who was up there, standing up there, sitting up there. They're the ones who make it happen, because I am either meeting with you, meeting with the resident, running to an event, speaking at an event, trying to go here, trying to go there, and they're the ones who are doing the work. So again, on my behalf, I want to thank all of you for your work, your contributions, for everything that you do, because you're the ones who make really the boat move. You're the one who make the engines move. I'm just a reflection of what you do. So I thank all of you, literally all of you, for, I can't pick, start mentioning one of you, because then I'm going to miss somebody, and then I'm going to be in trouble because I miss somebody. So I want to thank the cabinet and the staff and all the staff. But I also want to specifically thank my staff, Hung and Amy and America and Crystal and David and Matt and Sarah and Tom and Kieran and also Manny. Manny had to go home. He has a, he has a wife and he's expecting, so he has to, he has to go home. Family, man, it's important. But I want to thank all of them, because they're the ones who, day in and day out, are spending a lot of time, not only working with the council, working with the public, trying to communicate as best as possible. And yes, we build a communication team. It's not the city manager's communication team. It's the city government's communications team. It's just centralized in the city manager's office. It's important to note, it's not just my team, it's the entire department's teams, and they work with them day in and day out to put out information. But I want to thank all of them, because their commitment to the day-to-day of the city manager's office is important. And many of them are new. Many of them are new into their roles in terms of the positions that they're taking in the department. So I'm just grateful to be in this position, grateful for all of you, grateful for the work that you're all doing. But then I also want to thank the residents and the public of Worcester. We do not change, and we do not become better, and we don't do better without them. They're the ones who are holding you accountable, and then you hold me accountable, and then they're holding me accountable, to include even family, whether it's Thanksgiving or holidays, and I'm having dinner or conversations, and they're at a birthday party, and they're like, why didn't you do this street? And they're coming at me too. So I'm getting it from all angles, even family. Sometimes I have to give a disclaimer, that when I go to a party, I'm not going to talk about work, because it's part of the work, right? You're serving the public, and that just doesn't end. You're always serving the public. So I want to thank the residents and their work, because not only they volunteer to the boards and commissions, but they're going to neighborhood meetings, they're contributing in so many different ways, whether it's policies, whether it's day-to-day services, et cetera, and we're listening, we're paying attention. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we're paying attention, whether it's social media, whether it's the radio, whether it's newspapers, whether it's emails, phone calls, we're listening and we're paying attention. And we're doing everything we can to work with all of them and all of you to achieve what we need to achieve as a city and as a body, because running a municipality is a lot of work, but it can't be done without the people. So again, I just want to thank the people and all of you for that work, and thank the council for your confidence in me. And yes, we got more work to do, and we're going to battle a little bit more, but that's part of the gig, and that's part of what we do, and I appreciate all of you for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for sticking out tonight, and appreciate it, Mr. Manager, and we'll go back into the Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for sticking out tonight, and appreciate it, Mr. Manager, and we'll go back into the We are on petition, reports to the committee on traffic and parking, 9A to 9F, motions to advertise the proposed ordinance. Roll call. Counselor, what's that? I'm sorry, number 9A through F, advertise proposed ordinances from traffic and parking.
Thank you.
Do we do an 8K?
My, my, I missed it. Let's finish this. I'll go.
9A through F?
I don't remember.
I think we missed that.
Okay, let's finish traffic and parking and go back to that. Those, roll call.
Counselor Bergman.
Yes.
Counselor Calorio.
Yes.
Counselor G.I.
Yes.
Counselor Merrow Carlson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Hedo.
Yes.
Counselor Basillo.
Yes.
Counselor Russell.
Yes.
Counselor Tumi. Mayor Petty.
Yes. Attorney Tonya Gadsden, request to remove the wall at the end of Englis Street. We'll send that to city manager. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. We have tabled under privilege, first item is installation of a crosswalk at or near 1122 Pleasant Street. Counselor Bergman, you can file that or send to traffic and parking. Traffic and parking. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. We have petition, Gordon Davis, request the council removal of the table from its table. A petition submitted by Gordon Davis on May 14, 2024, saying council may provide the request in the state committee on public safety, investigate the issue of systemic racism and public safety with public hearing included. So we got that message, so we can file that. All those in favor, oppose so ordered. Hearing child communication for a condo location at Massasoie at 500 Grafton Street. We all settled that, or do we, why was that, where that was? Oh.
Shouldn't there be a hearing for that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we need to open the hearing on that. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. And anybody opposed that?
Do we advertise it as a hearing?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, okay.
We should have.
Yep.
Was that, yeah, we did, yep. So motion is, does anybody oppose? Motion to close the hearing, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. Motion is to approve, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. We are on next, granting permission to child communication for a condo location. Oh, I'm sorry, we had two of these. This is a 500 Grafton Street also. Motion is to open the hearing. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Motion is, nobody is against it. Motion is to approve. Motion is to close the hearing, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. Motion is to approve, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. Okay. Oh, these are the, I missed that out. Okay. Then we did D and E. We did F. Next one is order of Mayor Petty, Morris Bergman, according to section two of the city council, air duties employment agreement, the council of city of Worcester does hereby consider negotiating subsequent employment agreement beyond December 31, 2024. We needed to do that prior to end of June, so send that to M.O. All those in favor, oppose so ordered. Next is in the light of recent fires, request city manager expedite the implementation of the rental registry and PRR inspection of the multifamily building programs. We can send that to the manager?
We can file that at this point.
File, file at this point. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Next is communication, information communication of the status of the chronically homeless and unsheltered. That was a communication of the city manager. You can send that to, how was that? How was it, public health? Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Communication city manager, sharing information computer with a five-year homeless strategic plan. I think that's in, is that in public health? No, public health. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Communication city manager, writing information communication related to the policies for 110 inspections. Send that to E.D. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Mayor Petty, that the city council's city of Worcester is hereby amend its meeting schedules to reschedule the joint council and manager agenda on August 20th, which I'd like to change that to August 27th. Now take place on August 27th. Further that, the city council, the city council does hereby amend its meeting schedule to schedule a joint meeting, city manager agenda on Tuesday, September 10, 2024, to make a shift in the 24 state primary election schedule. So I was just trying to adjust these meetings to the work. So not, so the meeting would add a meeting on September 10th, because now, because of the primary schedule has changed, and also change the meeting from August 13th to August 27th. If that's okay with you.
Can you clarify that? What, which, what is the August one?
August right now is scheduled for the 13th, but not take place on the 13th. If I have that right.
It's the 13th, and you'd want to change it to the 27th.
I'm sorry, it's scheduled for the 20th. I had suggested the 13th, but people can't make the 13th.
Yeah, I can't make that.
Yeah, so I change it now to the 27th.
27th?
Yeah. Is anybody, otherwise we can just keep it to 20th, people want?
I would just, wait a minute, hold on.
Yeah, check your schedules and see.
What is it now, Mr. Chairman?
It's on August 20th, is this current meeting? Change it to August 27th, if you're sure. And if things don't work out, we come back to the 16th meeting, we can look at it again, but, okay.
And we're adding one.
Yeah, we can change it in July if we have to. Okay. How's that?
When is the July meeting, Mr. Chairman?
July is the, it's like the 13th or the 12th, is it?
What's the July meeting?
Is it on the agenda here?
Was it the 16th?
Is that a Tuesday? It's the 16th, that's a Tuesday. Yep. That's it. So all those in favor, oppose so ordered. Okay. Next one is request city court provide counsel with their report at the next meeting detailing all traffic ordinances ordered by the council over the last six years, as well as the items currently awaiting ordinances to be written by Department of Transportation Mobility. Counselor Merrow Carlson, we can adopt that. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Merrow Carlson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a rather odd situation that the city right now is facing, is that when we've put street changes for signs forward, what's happening is we adopted at city council, I'm sorry, it goes, it comes to council, goes to traffic and parking, traffic and parking adopts it, it's supposed to go to the clerk's office, waiting for, it used to be DPW to do the ordinance, now it's transportation and mobility, but we're finding that there's several signs that are out there that we're hearing from transportation and mobility that there was never an ordinance that was done. And I just don't want us to have to redo all these signs that are in all these neighborhoods that, whether it's resident parking or no parking from here to the corner, or no parking three to five, or whatever that is. I think we need to know what is happening, but just for the administration to know that I also handed Mr. Raleigh a list tonight of all of the ones that have passed through council that ordinances have not been done. And I know that doesn't sound like a big deal, but what's happening is when somebody is parking in front of somebody's driveway, or there's people parking on the street, it has come back that we can't enforce that because there's not an ordinance. So as crazy as this sounds, it's just, let's take a look at this and see what we have. Thank you.
So that's the manager, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. Or of council, High J.I., request mayor to provide the council with a summary of efforts that went into responding to the residents of the
Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to speak on that? I'm sorry, go ahead. Counselor Russell?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to drag, drag the meeting out further than we have to, but I want to be specifically clear, because we need a report from this administration that specifically outlines, I'll wait for you, Mr. Chairman, because it's important that the manager hears this. I think that it's important that we get a report from this administration that says what this process is, because we, I had the same situation happen on Vernon Street, where there were no parking signs for snow-related things. We put, Mr. Raleigh was nice enough to draft an ordinance that would have been needed to keep the signs up. We put that on the agenda, the committee had some pushback, the traffic committee had some pushback from residents, and Counselor O'Hair is going to meet with some residents, and they might come up with a different plan and all that kind of stuff, but it's important that we know what the policy is. Is there, have to be an ordinance or not? And, Mr. Chairman, and I don't want to bring up a whole other ball of wax here in a late hour, but this goes across the board, what needs ordinances and what doesn't need ordinances? What decisions are being made by DPW or Traffic, Traffic and Mobility Department? And what, we need a report that specifically outlines all this. And it's got to be crystal clear, because right now, I don't know what the answer is, because I'm being told one thing on one occasion, and on another occasion, I'm being told other things. So, thank you.
Thank you. So send that to the manager, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. Okay. Counselor High J.I., request the mayor to write counsel with a summary of all efforts that went into responding to the residents of the Washington Heights apartment complex displaced by the June 3 fire, including all parties involved in the response, any gaps, resources that have been identified, and the city response to all fires that have taken place in the last 24 months, number of significant fires that have resulted in fatalities, and number of residents displaced as a result of those fires in the last 24 months. Counselor High J.I.
As you read, can we send that to the city manager?
Can I sign on to that, Mr. Chairman, please?
Sure. Send the manager as amended. All those in favor, oppose so ordered. Request the manager request the chief development officer creating the online restaurant and dining directory map that lists restaurants in all five city council districts. Said directory should include filters based on restaurant location and the type of food options served. Counselor Merrow Carlson.
As it reads.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to oppose this item, but what I will say is that we, as a city, have decided to give a half a million dollars to Discover Massachusetts for marketing. The very least those folks could do, particularly given the fact that they are engaged in providing immeasurable outputs, that they should do this work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Send that to the manager, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. Request the manager request commissioner of public works and parks provide counsel with an update concerning the status of requests and proposals relative to the street repaving projects selected by the district councils of 25 and 26 fiscal years. Said report should include the timeline for construction and said repaving projects. Counselor Merrow Carlson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, this came up because of the fact that normally the streets are chosen by the district counselors, and they're chosen early on in February and March. There obviously was an issue this year, because again, this got moved from DPW to transportation and mobility. The issue then became that they didn't send it out to bid like they normally would, which would be in April. So now those bids, the RFPs just went out, and my understanding is, by the time those come back, that's not going to be until the end of August, the middle of September. So the question that now becomes for those of us who, I believe, the question is for the district counselors, the monies for those street picks were supposed to come out of last year's monies, but now they're moved into next year's monies. So how does, how does that work? So I think what we need to do is have a conversation with the administration, and certainly have a conversation with transportation and mobility, because we've now put the contractors in a position that they have no work that is bid for this year for street repaving or sidewalks repaving for the city of Worcester, and they won't get any of that until potentially the middle of October. And we've never, let's just say, this is that from conversations with the contractors, this has never happened before in the history this has never happened before in the history of the city of Worcester doing business with the RFPs going out. So it's a concern on two ends. One is what does that do to us time-wise, because are we going to be able to resurface all the streets that we've chosen, given the fact that the bids won't be awarded until the middle of October, number one? Number two is the question that I have is what does that do for the monies for the streets that were technically picked in this year's budget?
Okay, we'll send that to the manager?
That'd be great.
Okay. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Request the manager provide Council with an update concerning the outreach efforts completed by the city to ensure all senior residents are made aware of the senior work-off of Bateman program. Counselor Merrell Carlson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we possibly could get something back from the City Manager, I know this program is supposed to start July one. If you could let us know through you, Mr. Chairman, to the manager, what is, what are we doing, if anything, to try and get these folks on board for the senior work-off program, which is set in July first, was what was in, sent to us? So I don't know if you have any information to give, or I'm certainly happy to wait for you to come back with something.
To the, to the Council, yeah, no, it's good information. This is a good program, we're excited about it. July one, we'll begin the marketing and outreach, so we'll be coming to Council for the July meeting with some information on that, so that then we can have the, we'll start interviewing people, evaluating them, and then getting them on board. So our hope is that we can have the first group of seniors start working in municipal governments sometime in September.
Thank you.
Thank you. So send that to the manager. You want to still send that to the manager? Sign on. Men that include everybody to sign on, all those in favor, oppose so one, send to the manager as amended, all those in favor, oppose so ordered. I miscue Counselor Merrell Carlson on sidewalks, but I think he gave the same speech, so send that to the manager also. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Counselor Bergman, Counselor High G.I., request the manager may recommunicate with ever so request the work being done at the Rotary Intersection of Webster Street, hope that be resulting detours be done in a manner that minimizes interferences from the business operating nearby. And I think the manager got that message last meeting, we all set with that, send that to the manager. Counselor High G.I., Counselor Bow. Okay. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Okay, this brings us, okay, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, on the suspension yet or no?
What's that?
Are we on the suspension?
Yeah, Counselor Bergman has to end up first, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I rarely get up, I'll make a quick, two, two things, one of which is as I pass by and I see the Darty High School building coming down, I had several people reach out to me and ask what's going to happen to the DMHS letters on it, they thought it would be appropriate to either go to the historical museum or maybe be auctioned off someday, and they were told by construction workers that it's being thrown into the pile of demolition. I don't know if that's true or not, but if somebody could reach out and try to save that, I think for either reason, it would be worthwhile.
No, I think that's, let me find out about that, it's a good question, because some of the stuff is being actually auctioned off.
Well, maybe those, those letters would be great. The second thing, it's a pet peeve, and I apologize, because I don't mean to make it personal to anybody, but every time we have our meeting lately, somebody's vacuuming right behind us, and there's plenty of time to vacuum the building, and it's difficult to hear, so I'm wondering if we could just communicate with the folks that are doing that, and maybe they could either vacuum before or after the meeting. It's, it's harder on this side, maybe it's not as hard on the other side, but I apologize. I know they're only doing their job, but it's probably not easy for the public to do either.
So send it to the managers, both of those items, all those in favor, oppose so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As some folks in the cultures say, the streets are talking, Mr. Chairman, and I've been able to confirm that there was a recent meeting here at City Hall that involved a community leader in a group where things got a little bit untenable, in that perhaps the mayor himself had to place himself between a community member and an appointed official of the City Council, Mr. Chairman. I know that that particular individual, and I've, has been speaking about this, and there was a number of folks at that meeting, and it's, it's out there, that particular person has a pattern of having community and impersonal harm at the forefront of their engagements, Mr. Chairman, while presenting as a purveyor of community upliftment. My, my motion, Mr. Chairman, is to advise the Council as to when there are such engagements that occur with regards to such individuals in such situations, what parameters are put in place on behalf of our appointed officials, and subsequently whether or not that should be communicated to the Council as they move forward with perhaps engaging with said individuals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't know what to do with that, if I didn't put myself in the middle of anybody, so, but we'll send it to M.O. and take a look at that. All those in favor, oppose so ordered. Okay. With that, I just asked for the next meeting, you're not allowed to put anything on the banisters of this historic building, it's in the rules of the Council, so I ask for that next meeting, nothing be attached to anything on the, on the Council room. So, the motion to that, we're going to motion to adjourn, all those in favor, oppose so ordered.